Good evening and welcome to the February 7th, 2019 Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting and Public Hearings. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. And we typically start our meeting with an invocation and a pledge. I'd like to ask Dave Bruin, our Chief Financial Officer, to lead us. Please stand as you are able.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight to do the work of the county, we want to be mindful, first of all, to thank you and praise you for the many blessings we experience here in this community, those that we are together with and work and play and all the activities that go on here. We thank you for the health and the many benefits you've given to us here. And even as we thank you for that, Lord, we want to pray for this meeting tonight, that you'll be with those who participate, especially with our elected officials who give of their time to the governing of the county. We pray that all the participation in this meeting will be for the putting forth of good information, for the good action of the people as a whole, with wisdom and insight and understanding. And we thank you for that. And finally, I also want to thank you, Lord, for those in our uniformed services that protect us and even as we honor one of their own tonight here, and for the job they do here and for the safety and welfare of this community. We thank you for this opportunity again to come together and self-government tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move on to the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, do you have any changes, additions, or postponements to the agenda?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Brown?
I'd like to postpone St. Giles Sales LLC AZ-180029, Public Hearing Number Four, until March 7th, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to postpone Public Hearing Number Four to, you said, March the...
Seventh.
...seventh. Please vote. That motion carries five to zero, and Item Number Four under Public Hearings is postponed to March the 7th. Anyone else?
Are we going to do?
If y'all go in quiet, I believe this is mine.
Number two.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw application on, as Public Hearing Number Two, and it's per the applicant.
Second.
Just for clarification, is that with or without prejudice?
And here's what's interesting, Madam Chair, they don't specify in their letter to me.
So we'll consider it withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
I have a motion and a second for the withdrawal of Public Hearing Number Two. Please vote.
Madam Chair, may I ask, just a point of order, I guess my concern is if we don't add whether it is or without, that it might raise an issue later. My not respect...
I just said withdrawn, because that's what their letter says. I did not say with prejudice in my motion. Is that okay?
You should say with...
I'm suggesting to you, if we don't describe it with one or the other, it may become a point of contention, because if it's with prejudice, there are limitations on their ability to refile.
I understand for them to want to bring this back at some point.
Well, I absolutely understand, but I mean, I hate to read into their minds, but have we not voted yet?
We have not.
Whoever made the second withdrawal?
I voted.
Oh, well, you can pull that back, but who did the second?
Commissioner Brown.
Did you withdraw it?
Withdrawn.
Okay. I withdraw my motion. I'll remake my motion to withdraw with prejudice, Public Hearing Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for withdrawal with prejudice for Item Number Two under Public Hearings. Please vote. And that motion does pass, five to zero. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Counselor, on Old Business Number One, that's the one we were going to go to, do you want to state that? And we did get a letter asking not to put it on the first for the public hearing. We were going to make announcement.
When it comes up, I mean, that's when the board's going to take action, we can address it then.
So just let it stay on as is?
Yes, ma'am.
We had just talked, R. and I had talked about, there were people going to be here for it, not wanting to wait, them having to wait till...
Well, why don't we go ahead, I think it would be perfectly appropriate to go ahead and let the gallery know what the expectation is and that what we're going to do when it comes up. I think that's perfectly fine.
Was the concern that they would not be here for a future public hearing, so they wanted to have, say, a peace now, because being under old business, they would need to do it during public comments anyway, as there's no public participation?
I think they just wanted to make sure that the action was going to take place as they had seen we were just going to...
Formalize that.
Yeah. We had talked about even moving it up in the agenda.
Yeah. Well, move it to the first item and we'll dispense with it there.
That's it. Perfect. Motion, second on that.
All right, I'll make a motion that we move Old Business Number One to, I shouldn't move it where Public Hearing is.
Do you want to move it before Number One in Public Hearing?
Okay. Before Number One of Public Hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move Old Business Number One prior to Public Hearing Number One. Please vote. And that motion does pass, so we will be hearing that item prior to our public hearings. Are there any other changes from the commissioners? Mr. Johnson, do you have any from the county manager's office?
No, ma'am.
Tim Merritt, do not. Counselor, do you have any changes?
Madam Chair, no changes for me.
No changes. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I do have a change.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Planting Department. Public Hearing Number One, is there a change for our unitified development code on microbreweries and micro distilleries? The Planning Commission did not have their meeting based on inclement weather, so I'm recommending you postpone that one month to March 7th.
Can you explain the inclement weather that you're referring to, because I sure didn't see any?
Pass.
Commissioners, it was reported to me that we had at least six snowflakes outside this building that day.
And you closed the county.
Yes, sir. I filed the lead of our esteemed governor in closing the county for the day.
But I do have a question that was raised to me, that, you know, the Planning Commission didn't meet in December, and then they had to cancel the meeting in January. Are they able to schedule a meeting other than what's on the published meeting?
Their February meeting is going to be a doozy.
They could. Now, by the time last Tuesday's meeting was canceled, time-wise, it would not have saved a whole lot of time. It would have broken into two meetings rather than one long meeting, but with the ad requirements, we would not have been able to conduct it much earlier, and maybe not earlier at all than the scheduled meeting for February.
So, to feed off Commissioner Mills' comment, if their agenda's so thick that they're here till midnight, should they not consider splitting it up? Because the citizens that have to come to that are just here really late, and I'm sure they probably have things to do the next morning as well, as our staff and the Planning Commission.
And won't it mean that our meeting's just going to be awful in another month?
We'll have rolling impacts from all of this stuff.
No ball. But it's just something to consider. You're the director, you may want to recommend something.
I hope that it gets over. It is challenging to add another meeting to the cycle on short notice. We will, I think what I offer you is that we talk to the Planning Commission more in general and how we want to approach it in the future when we have a long agenda. I think at this point, we're probably locked into having a long meeting in February, but we will...
Got to catch up sometime.
Could you even announce if we have an inclement weather day that we're going, like, put a star and say it'll roll to the next Tuesday?
Fifteen days, they have to have fifteen days or more for Public Hearing.
The legal ad.
I will look into that. I'll work with Gerard and Davis to see if we have any options for that kind of advanced alternative advertisement.
Three, seven. We haven't voted yet.
With a little thought, it could be planned.
Do I hear a motion to postpone that item to March the 7th?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote. Good luck with that, Planning Commission. Are there any other changes from staff? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Counselor, have anything?
We already went to Counselor.
We did that, okay.
He did not.
Good. Excellent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Announcements and reports, we do have one. Pat, if you can come forward, please.
Yes, Commissioners and citizens, tonight we recognize and honor an employee who has reached 25 years of service with Forsyth County Government. On October 20th, fourth quarter of 2018, Brenda Green, Division Chief of Fire Administration with the Forsyth County Fire Department, reached 25 years of service. In acknowledgement of her extensive years of service with the Forsyth County Fire Department, Fire Chief Head is here to present the Milestone Service Award. At this time, I ask that the Board of Commissioners and Ms. Green come to the podium for the award presentation. Chief Head?
There's nothing I can say to even come close to explain to everyone how important this individual is for us. Chief Green is the fabric that holds our department together, and there is virtually nothing that gets done from our department that doesn't have her fingerprints on it. With that, Chief Green, I'm happy to present this 25-year service award to you, and I hope you're here for 25 more.
How could you guys all screw it in just a little bit tighter?
Look, they can go man the fire stations again.
As our folks are filing out here, I'm going to allow Ken and Karen to read the rules of the meeting and announce the public comments speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'd like to take a few moments to review the meeting procedures. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Those who wish to speak during public comments must complete a public comment form, which is available just outside this room. Information regarding specific requirements to address the board is listed at the podium. Please state this information prior to speaking. All comments shall be directed to the entire board and not to a particular commissioner. There are two public comment opportunities during the meeting, for speakers to make a verbal presentation to the board, one now and one prior to Old Business. The number of speakers is limited to 10 now and 10 at the second portion. Speakers are selected on a first-come, first-come basis and will be heard in the order in which they signed up, with the exception that Forsyth County residents will be heard first, with non-county residents to follow until the allotted time has expired. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have nine public speakers this evening. They are all county residents, and I'm going to ask for your indulgence as I attempt to pronounce names. I will do my best. Our first speaker is Nazira DeWood.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Nazira Daud. I'm here on behalf of all the residents and community citizens who've come forward in the past few weeks because of a loss of life that happened at the intersection of 141 and Calaway Court. As the residents were struggling to find out what the next steps were and how their concerns can be heard, one of my good friend pulled me in because she thought I knew the process, since I worked in Fulton County as the Chief of Staff for the previous Commissioner Chairman. And so we all got together, we've been discussing, and we know today that Sri Ram Sundaram's spirit is here. That was a life that, the death that could have been preventable. And we are working full force, day and night, discussing the next steps, whom to meet, how to move forward, so the concerns are heard. We would like to thank each of you for your service, and Commissioner Mills and Commissioner Brown, thank you for arranging the meeting with GDOT a couple of weeks ago. Since then, we would like to thank our Sheriff Freeman as well for working on his promises and came up with the speed study and the report from the GDOT about whether the signal can be implemented at the intersection or not. And of course, the GDOT, we are waiting for the GDOT for a complete report, a comprehensive report, on what is the best measures that can be achieved or implemented at the intersection. As you can, if you join the community group that we are in and you hear the concerns of the residents and their fear of taking turns, especially in that intersection, it's really fearful. The husbands are waiting for their wives to text and say, "We've crossed the intersection." And I hear many wives say that they're still haunted because of loss of Sri Ram's life. And so, again, thank you so much. We have other residents who'll be speaking on these concerns, and we are here because it was already, the concern was raised back in 2015, so we hope that you will take it up this time and make it a safer community for Forsyth residents, coming citizens, as well as residents who visit, such as me and my family, to get into the shopping center for the shopping. So thank you so much again for your service.
Ponni? I am sorry.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ponni Chinnamutu. I'm the resident of Coming, Forsyth County, and I have been living here for about three years. I live here with my husband and two of my daughters. I'm the author of the petition for safety measure, which was signed by 3,578 supporters online and 87 on a physical hard copy. I go to the complex at Calaway Court and Peachtree Parkway intersection on a weekly basis, with Cherry's being my primary grocery store, and I access the other businesses over there on a regular basis. The recent tragic accident happened to a couple at the mentioned intersection with Sri Ram lost his life. That made a deep impression within me, so as to anyone else. I could imagine myself in that situation. That's when I thought I should start a petition to have a proper safety measure at the intersection. There were few other like-minded people who wanted to do something for this, and then we were able to group together and work together so that some action can be taken to save any other life. And also, I would like to thank Commissioner Cindy Mills and Commissioner Brown for arranging the meeting with other officials to hear us. We expect proper safety measure will be taken after GDOT comes up with a proposal. Once again, thank you for considering our petition. Thank you.
Sudhir Gidhathuri?
Good afternoon. I'm Sudhir Gidhathuri. I'm representing the voice of 127 families of cottages of Greystone that share the same Calaway Court with the strip mall to enter and exit the highway. There has been an accident, in light of the recent accident and fatality, in fact. We residents of that community are living in fear right now, and the fear of not knowing when our family members are crossing this intersection, entering and exiting, because of multiple yieldings and multiple bottlenecks at this particular intersection. While all the regulations at this junction are legal, perfectly legal, but still, there are so many yielding confusions, giving the right of way and all, and that's causing a lot of confusion. So, we as residents are the best advocates to actually point out the problems, because we are using the junction for about four, five times a day, every family member. So, it's haunting us to actually see the fact that, I mean, somebody has lost a life there, and we don't want to be the next victims there. And we have raised our concerns about four years ago to the county that there is increased traffic conditions, and county always pointed out metrics, which is perfectly legal. But, yeah, we agree that, I mean, that this intersection doesn't provide enough metrics to compare with the traffic lights. We are really not worried about, I mean, what comes, because we leave it to the traffic experts to decide what comes next there. But we are open, even if you want to seal off the intersection completely, in fact, so that, I mean, there won't be any more loss of lives. So, we are open for any kind of safety measures that can be taken on this particular intersection, and not knowing our family members crossing is kind of... So, the petition that was submitted to the county, I have copies of this, which I'll be dropping off with them, addressing our concerns there. And we are here because there was a loss of life, which could have been saved. I mean, we personally feel this life could have been saved four years ago if the increased traffic conditions were actually given a thought by the authorities and all. Now, even if, even now, if we don't take any action or any preventive measures or safety conditions analysis or something, I think everyone here, including the authorities, everyone who did not raise the voice towards this intersection, and they are using this intersection, but they did not raise their voice today or express their concerns about this, any more bloodshed on this intersection on future accidents will be in our hands, in fact. That's what we strongly believe. So, we urge the local authorities and as taxpayers to please give it a thought, avoid the confusions with all the yieldings and the bottlenecks that are causing, and separate us, if possible, in fact, as a community. We are living there, in fact. For others, it's just passing by and using the strip mall, but we are living there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. My name is Tharini, and I'm currently a sophomore at South Forsyth High School. My family and I have lived in Forsyth County for over five years now, and I absolutely love the environment which Forsyth County provides for both students and families alike, especially the cultural diversity and the way that a community can come together to help provide for an amazing cause. When I first heard about this accident, I was absolutely shocked and devastated. I could not comprehend that this had actually happened to someone that I had interacted with, and especially around an area that I daily, regularly commute to, and my mind was just disturbed that, with the loss of an innocent man's life, especially one with kids and a wife, a loving wife. And all I could think about was that this could have been prevented. Immediately after hearing this, all I could think about was conjuring up scenarios of me driving down that road, especially as an emerging driver on Forsyth County roads, and facing the same tragic accident that he had faced with that day. As a friend of those who drives on a regular basis along those roads just to buy groceries, and a child of parents who frequently visit there, not just for groceries, but for food or to buy clothes, it really impacted me, and I did not want to worry about the possibilities where things could go wrong, for either my parents or for my friends alike. I don't want parents losing their children because proper safety measures weren't being taken. Now imagine walking across the stage for your high school graduation, or walking down the aisle for your wedding day, or receiving your first paycheck. Now imagine all of that never happening, or your loved ones not being able to share in that happiness. This is exactly the same type of tragic situation that occurred due to the hazardous conditions of the Cherry's intersection, which is why I believe that a traffic light is the most proper safety measure to ensure that not one more child or one more parent is robbed of safety and their happiness. Thank you.
Ashaya Dandapar?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ashaya. I am a sixth grader at South Forsyth Middle School. I am just a short four years away from getting my own driver's license. First and foremost, I would like to thank all the Forsyth County officials and commissioners who work tirelessly, day and night, to make sure our community is such a wonderful place to live in. I would also like to thank the Sheriff's Department for keeping our community safe. I went to the Junior Law Enforcement Academy over the summer, and it was a great experience for me. So, about the accident, the person who lost his life in this unfortunate event was actually the father of one of my best friend's distant friends, and she was upset about it for days on end. This just made me think. Someone who has a family, someone who had almost a whole life ahead of them, how could this have happened? Because none of the proper safety measures were taken. And there is an Indian grocery store in that complex where you take the left turn for the intersection. My family frequents there often, because it sells many of the things that we use as a part of our culture and lifestyle. One day, my mom was taking a turn to that intersection to buy things from the store. She says that she dreads having to navigate four lanes just to take the turn. One time, when she was about to take the turn, we had an impatient driver behind us who continued honking their horn, because my mom didn't take the turn. She was surprisingly very calm about it and told me that she will only take the turn when she deems it safe, and that road safety was everyone's responsibility, not just a single driver's. That day, she emphasized how much life would be easier if we had a traffic signal there, because there would be a lot less incidents like this, and maybe people would actually see that it's not just their life that's important, there's so many other people who use this road. We all have differing opinions on what to do about this situation, but maybe our differences are our strengths and not our weaknesses. We can find a solution that benefits everyone. Thanks again for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the community, and I hope we will have a resolution soon to help ease some nerves. Thank you.
Did a great job.
Sai Krishnan Nathien?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, Commissioners. I am Sai Krishnan Nathien, and I am a friend of Sri Ram Sundaram. So Sri Ram was a very cheerful and a very positive person. I mean, and he was a senior manager in Cognizant Technology Solutions, and he had mentored hundreds of people in his career to build their careers. On Thursday, the 17th of January, Sri Ram returned home from work, and he and his wife went, picked up a Starbucks, and headed to the Indian grocery stores. And in the junction of Georgia 141 and Calaway Court, he just made a left turn, and he was hit by a pickup truck. He later suffered, I mean, he suffered like severe head injury, and he passed away later during surgery in Wellstar North Fulton Hospital. It was just an honest mistake, making a left turn, maybe he couldn't really see the oncoming traffic. And that split-second mistake actually took away his life and turned his family's life upside down. Sri Ram was on a work visa, so this put his family not only under tremendous grief, but also under extreme pressure to kind of wind up their entire family and relocate to India in like a matter of few days. We had to sell stuff, we had to donate most of their stuff, we actually had to go and return their leased car, get their children's school reports and like vaccination records so that they could relocate to India again, all in a few days. This tragic incident actually resonated a lot among us. I mean, it could have been any one of us making that left turn in that particular junction that day. And I personally have had experiences that were like really close, and I felt like, oh, okay, maybe I should have not miscalculated. So, I mean, as people who actually frequent that shopping center, we understand how difficult to make that turn is and how dangerous it is. We would like this fatality to be the last in that intersection, and we trust that GDOT and the county will actually come up with the best resolution, but we did want to bring this up today and highlight the loss of life. And I would also like to especially thank Commissioner Mills for helping us expedite a lot of paperwork that was needed to transport Sri Ram's mortal remains to India, Sheriff Ron Freeman for expediting the police report, and his team for actually going above and beyond in helping us trace Sri Ram's personal... beyond in helping us trace Shri Ram's personal belongings. And also Deputy Coroner Chris Felton for helping us in like the coroner's report as well. I really thank you very much for this opportunity and hope action will be taken soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shri Shakti Krishnar.
I am Shakti and I am a 12-year-old at South Forsyth High School, Middle School. Thank you, everyone, for giving me the honor of coming here today and speaking. It gives me great happiness to know that I have the chance to speak about a family that I really love and care about. My friends, Upasana and Utra, both recently lost their dad. This event affected not only me, but it affected them and their whole lives and it can never be reversed. We are all so lucky that we have our fathers with us today and they have the opportunity to watch us grow. They are with us to show us how to be the best version of ourselves. And we often take them for granted, but we really never know when they're going to be gone. They are lucky to see us get into our first college, get our first job, our driver's license, and we have the satisfaction of making our fathers proud and seeing their face light up. And when I picture my future, I see my future kids and my house and I see my parents as proud grandparents. And without my dad, I don't know what I would do. But for Upasana and Utra, they don't get that opportunity. They are both so young and their dad didn't even get to see Utra go to middle school for his life got cut so short, just due to some simple accident, but it ended his life. They are lucky to have a gentle, kind and overall wonderful middle mother, but a father can't be replaced. They make us smile when we're sad and they always support us. Their whole life is going to be fatherless, but all of it happened so fast. He died while doing something so simple as driving to a grocery store. I remember when we used to have so much fun together and both of them are such wonderful, loving people. They are very brave and mature, especially in this horrible situation. They have been putting a smile on their face and staying strong for their mother. Not once did I see them shed a tear. We always had good times, we laughed, did magic tricks, ate Oreos, and now two of my best friends are halfway around the world grieving their dad's death. It pains me to see them in this situation, which is why we need this traffic light, so that we won't lose any more lives. I will miss them so very much that I can't put it in words, but I will keep them in my heart and hope for the best. Thank you so much, everyone.
Kenneth Heyman.
In light of that, in the last few moments, what I have to say is definitely of little interest. I have a letter that, was I supposed to tell where I where I live?
Yeah, your name and.
My name is Kenneth Heyman, spelled H-E-Y-M-A-N. I live at 7555 Breeze Bay, Gunning, Georgia. I'm here to speak in behalf of short-term rentals. It was my home that started the current conflict in the county related to short-term rentals. The two calls that were made to my home, one was for Levante Farmer and the other, the second call was to a Mr. Hunt. I'm submitting for the record the letter from Mr. Hunt related to the call that was made to my home and I would appreciate very much if if you guys could read that. And the last time I was here, we had a rather difficult night and I don't want to repeat that. What I'd like to do though is I'd like to invite all of the Commissioners to come to my home and let me show you physically the place that I lease out on the weekends through the through the summer and list. And then if you would please let me explain why and what happened that night that has caused all of this trouble. That's all I really have to say. I'm just asking you please, if you would please respond, if you would. I've called multiple times to the Commissioners and I have yet to receive a call back. I do appreciate your work. I know you're you're obviously you've got significant work. This is my first contact with a political this experience and I probably offended you somewhere along the way and for that I do apologize. But I wouldn't want what's happened at my home and what's happened in my experience to cause issues among those three or four hundred other homes, short-termal homes that are going to be affected and them perhaps even more than me. At any rate, you know, I think you all know that I believe there's a massively significant racial component to this issue. I still believe that forcefully and I would prefer that we sort this out. I'm that's all I'm asking. If you can just reach out and let me speak to you if I could, I've only spoke once here and I need to speak, I need to talk to you if I could. I don't want to do it here in this environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Senthil Ramaswamy.
Good evening, Commissioners and good evening, everyone. Actually, I didn't prepare to speak here. I just came to know about the.
Can you give us your name real quick?
My name is Senthil Ramaswamy.
Okay.
I came to Forsyth County about two years back, been resident since then. I just came to talk about the similar incident, all of our, you know, the resident talked about the intersection, their friend, we lost, you know, lost his life unfortunately. He was my neighbor. I talked to him every day. And my little one, his little one are classmates. So my little one's still asking, where are they? You know, where is his father? Still, I couldn't recover from the shock. You know, the family has gone through so much. I apologize, you know, I'm still shaking. You know, this is my experience. I am, you know, I've been in this country for almost 20 years. I lived in so many states. I came to, you know, Georgia, Atlanta and Forsyth County two years back, even though I driven in so many states, so many freeways, roads. Forsyth County I came, I liked the, you know, greenery and rain. But when I drive, start driving on the roads, it's very, what I say, the visibility on the intersections are, I know, inadequate lighting. You know, the peach tree is 50 miles, you know, speed freeway, it's like you're driving on the 400. And all the residents are, communities are merging in the road. How do you do that? If you open a freeway 400, if you merge everyone without proper adequate lanes, merging lanes or signal and visibility, what would happen? You can imagine that, that's what happening, not only that intersection. Because I dropped my elder one in Southford High School, major intersection, Ronald Reagan and Peachtree, that is major intersection, there is a big mouth there, even though there is signals everywhere, but there is no lighting at all. Even normal evening nights, it's very hard to turn, you know, make merge into right lanes. On normal nights, if if it is raining or in a visibility, I can't even imagine. When I merge at the lane, I don't know where I'm ending. I'm running into the middle of the, apology, you know, please give me one more minute. That's what happens when you.
If you hold up just one one more minute, we have to actually vote on that.
I make a motion, add one minute to the clock.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. If you can set another minute on the clock, please. Go ahead.
So when you mentioned that many of the lanes, all of the sudden lanes ends without proper sign saying lane ends, merge, and all of a sudden there is a concrete blocks everywhere on the roads without signs says lane urging in main routes. We went over the concrete, those concrete squares or blocks many time. So on the merging into the free, like a peach tree on the 50 miles freeway, there's only, there is no merge lanes or when you exiting, there is only like two, three cars space enough to, you know, slow down and merge, enter into a complex or wherever community. So, you know, proper lighting, at least on the intersections, any intersection you take, provide adequate lighting and provide, even the concrete blocks are there for safety, but they are not painted or reflectors, nothing there on the night, you can't see those blocks unless you're driving here for 20 years. Probably on the. Even if you're driving 20 years, there is no reflectors, there is no painter on those blocks, you cannot recognize, it's on your back, you know, on your.
Do you need more time or you?
No, I think I think this is good enough. I just want to share my experience.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
If anyone else wishes to address the board during this public comment section, please come forward at this time. I see none, Madam Chairman.
Karen, going to move on to the adoption of the minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting and public hearings of January 17th, 2019?
So moved.
Have a motion, a second, please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the work session, executive session of January 22nd, 2019?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, please vote. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the special call meeting of January 24th, 2019?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the special call joint meeting and executive session of January 31st, 2019?
So moved.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. That also passes five to zero. And finally, I, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. That also passes with five to zero. Karen, that brings us back to public comments. Oh, do we have any? We don't have any other speakers?
Public hearings?
Excuse me, yes, that brings us to public hearings. Can you read the announcement regarding the requirements for speakers during public hearings?
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, are you going to do old business first?
Old business one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you are correct. We did move old business ahead of the public hearings.
Got one anyways.
Is there a motion to, well, actually, we need a presentation on that.
Madam Chair, I'll take over that one if you don't mind. Board members, this is an item that has been moved now to the beginning of the agenda. This is an item that is a land use conditional use permit CP 180011. I believe there was an interest by the District Commissioner to schedule another or an additional supplemental public hearing, which is of course, the Unified Development Code always allows that as an opportunity for the board should it wish, and that is the reason this was placed on the agenda this evening. I believe when this was originally conceived, the idea was this would be placed on the March 7th, 2019. Board of Commissioners' agenda, however, the board or the county did receive a request today and again, I'll just offer this up for the District Commissioner to consider that due to some availability issues that perhaps it be contemplated that the public hearing occur on the March 21st, public hearing, which that's not our typical public hearing calendar, but certainly we do public hearings on those off dates as well. Madam Chair, District Commissioner.
Commissioner, what is your pleasure?
This, when this was brought forward, there's been so many meetings and a lot of public participation, but from when it was first presented, the the site plan has changed drastically. It has come down tremendously. It started out, I think, at 24,000 square feet, maybe even bigger. I think it took up a whole lot of space and it's down to 4,000, but it has changed a lot. And so then some of the neighbors had asked, could there be one more public hearing? The the pastor is going to be out of town on March the 7th and so he asked, could we move it to the March 21st meeting? I'm good with that. I'm happy that they're willing to be accommodating and give one more public hearing. So if it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion that we could postpone this decision and do the decision and the public hearing on March the 21st, and that's my motion.
A second for adding it as also a public hearing.
We do have a motion, a second, to move this to public hearing on the 21st with decision to follow. Please vote. And that motion passes five to zero with that item being moved straight to public hearing with.
Madam Chair, just a just a real quick question with respect to the expectations of the board. So would there be an expectation, again, this is supplemental to the public hearings that have already occurred, would there be an expectation of signage and a legal ad published?
I would say so.
Particularly since we have the lead.
We understand. Thank you.
At this time, Karen, now we'll read the requirement for all speakers for our public hearings.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the public hearings portion of the meeting, please note that each side, those in opposition and those in support, are allotted 10 minutes to speak. Those who wish to speak must complete a public hearing form available just outside of this room. Please fill out both sides and submit your form to the clerk when approaching the podium. If there is more than one speaker for each side, the available time will be divided among the speakers. We will provide a reminder when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Public hearing number one was postponed until March the 7th. Public hearing number two was withdrawn with prejudice, which takes us to public hearing number three. Tom Brown.
AZ 180012, this is in Commission District Number Five. It's a public hearing for Fidel Rotten regarding the amendment of condition number one for five, seven and 17, as well as the deletion of conditions number 11 and 13 placed on zoning application 2435. The applicant's also requesting two variances. The first is to reduce the zoning setback 30 feet to allow a zoning setback to be 10 feet and the second is to reduce the zoning buffer 20 feet to allow a zoning buffer to be 10 feet.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second, please vote. That public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. We'll start with people who want to come and speak in favor of this application, is the applicant or their attorney present, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Sam Bagwell. I live at 7700 Paces Lane, 30506. I've been living in Forsyth County for just over 38 years and this is my first time getting to address you guys in this capacity, so it's a pleasure. Ms. Rotten is not able to be here tonight. She has been having some health issues and travel is difficult for her at this point. This is a, an application that was originally filed and ready to be scheduled back in November. It has been postponed a number of times. We've had good community outreach and and community meetings about the language and site plans and those have developed and changed over time since the initial application. I believe most of the updates have been forwarded to you for your files and for review tonight. To the extent that they haven't, I have packets that I previously filed with the clerk that I can distribute to to talk through if you guys need demonstrative aids.
Have those conditions changed from what was transmitted to us electronically?
The conditions have not, I don't know if you have the most current site plan that was forwarded, it's included in this, but it's the same conditions that you have in front of you.
Okay, if you want to go ahead and have, they can distribute those to us. Thanks. Thank you.
Subject parcel is a little shy of an acre. It was originally meant to be part of a much larger urban village, multi-use retail development that fell through. The zoning conditions that were put in place at the time, the zoning conditions. The zoning conditions that were put in place at the time, the, the zoning conditions that were put in place at the time of the original urban village zoning had Ms. Routen's lot as a border lot. It was, it was the northernmost lot and it had an extensive buffer and setback system all around it, surrounding the entire complex. When that entire project fell through, it left some orphan lots, one of which being Ms. Routen's lot, which is now a single freestanding one acre lot with about 100 feet wide, but with 40 feet of setbacks on one side and 80 feet of setbacks on the other, it made it undevelopable and unsellable. And so she's trying to revise some of those conditions that were put in place to allow for that. Once we filed the initial application, we had no pushback or objections from anyone except for Grove Park, which is the neighborhood immediately to the east of the subject property. And so we've met a few times, once with some members of the commission present. Mr. De Priest, who is here, has hosted a meeting at his house. Mr. Isel is here. He's hosted a meeting at his house. And so at each meeting, we've come closer and closer and closer to an agreement. So good progress has been made. The redlined language that has been presented as part of this amended application has been agreed to by Grove Park as well as Ms. Routen. At the time that the site plan that you have in front of you and that was being displayed was submitted, it was my understanding that had been agreed to as well. Yesterday evening, Ms. Housley advised me that she and Mr. Isel might wish to revise that further. Ms. Routen has not authorized me to, to revise that further. The initial site plan, as we filed it, had requested a 9,000 square foot, two-story professional office building, medical use office, professional use office building. Through discussions with Grove Park, one of their primary concerns was the visibility of this potential development. And so in order to address their concerns, a few things have been done. One, we have agreed to reduce the building down to a single-story building with roof and architectural language as suggested by Grove Park. They want a single-story pitched roof. We've accommodated that. They did want the four-foot berm still in place at the 50-foot line. They did not want us to reduce the setback to 50 feet, so we agreed to leave it at 80 feet. They have requested what they are calling a good neighbor fence, which has been attached to the documentation that you have on top of the berm and then on the Grove Park side of that fence, an opaque vegetative screen even to hide that. And so those accommodations have been made. I'm, I'm sure that some people from Grove Park may take issue with my recollection of some of the negotiations. However, my recollection is when discussing reducing the building height and thereby reducing the need for additional parking spaces, we had discussed the ability to use more of the width of the property for the building itself. And so we submitted a revised site plan to them at that point, which we then discussed at our January 22nd meeting. We made a few more tweaks about changing some of the language from, to include the word northern for the northern boundary, where we're requesting the variance and some things that were changed and to show the undisturbed buffer in addition to the planted buffer. At that meeting, we had left the site plan and the building size at 6,000 square feet. Is my recollection and my understanding. Again, I know from an email that Ms. Housley and Ms. Isel may be requesting an additional reduction down to 5,000 square feet. Looking at the topography of the land, the only lot in Grove Park that touches Ms. Routen's lot is Mr. Isel's. And so the slope, it slopes towards Grove Park. So Ms. Isel is down, Mr. Isel is downhill from this lot. And so that, hence the berm and the water retention thing, design that has been accommodated in the site plan to prevent water running down to Grove Park. But in order to address the visibility issues, Mr. Isel will be looking uphill through the woods to the subject property, through the vegetative screen, over the wall. Whether the structure is 5,000 square feet or 6,000 square feet will not change the visibility of the Grove Park, will not change the parking requirements to Grove Park. As best I can tell, it would show no appreciable difference or distinction in the day-to-day operations or lifestyle of Grove Park in any way. However, the loss of an additional 1,000 square feet, just on a price per square foot basis, would significantly impact the potential sale price of this lot. One of the frustrating components of this negotiation, and I know we felt it on both sides, Ms. Routen is not a developer. She is a seller. She was widowed. She inherited this property and from being the surviving widow of her spouse. She is simply trying to sell it to someone who can make better use of it, increase the tax base of the property from what it currently is, which is a vacant lot with a scraped-off old house that's no longer there. She has no intention of developing it. She is simply trying to get something in place that is marketable that would help her sell the property. So as it currently stands, that, I think that brings everyone up to date. We are requesting, again, on the northern side, the variance down to 10 feet. I believe there is currently zoning applications on that lot for, for similar type development. They have not objected or pushed back in any way. On the south lot, which was also urban village, there was no setback, but we have included a 10-foot setback in our site plan anyway, which gives them more protection than they had previously. Again, we've had no pushback from them on this. So if there are questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll let anyone else speak who wants to.
Okay, thank you. If you wanted to grab, we've got a few more minutes for pro-site. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to come forth and speak in favor of this application, please do so at this time.
I believe you're speaking against that portion.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I'm, I'm seeing none. You do have 2 minutes and 34 seconds on the clock. Do you wish to reserve that?
I would like to reserve that in case I need to respond if possible.
Okay, thank you. If there's anyone who'd like to come forward and speak in opposition to this application, please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Herman Isel, and my property is right behind the mentioned property from Mr. Bagwell. I really know against it, but I think the 6,000 square feet on this lot is a little bit too much. However, my big issue is the fence. It is a wooden fence, and I think it should be a brick fence because wooden fences need maintenance on both sides. Who's going to do that? A wooden fence start rotten in three, four years, the wooden fence is down. Who's going to build a new one? So I think it should be a brick fence, the same as from the property held south. They produce a brick fence, and I think the whole line should be the same. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
If there's anyone else that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this application, please do so.
Sharon Housley? I'm also immediately adjacent and slightly downhill, so I'll be looking at that also. The previous house was actually viewable in my backyard also. And I want to, I want to stress the importance of our UDC codes. This, this lot is less than an acre. This is, they're asking for a 6,000 square foot building. It will be squished in between two current residents. And even if there is the development on the adjacent property, which is up, they're also proposing almost exactly right in the same area, it'll be only maybe about 100 feet from this building, another 5,000 square foot building. And from my house, you'll be looking at through, behind my house, two large buildings. It will impact my property value and my privacy. They, they, we, we try to build in and we cooperate and try to build in screens. But the screens, they don't grow in for several years. And the walls somehow, in the previous zonings that we have had, they don't always get built like we had intended and had specified in our comments. So, you know, I don't think that reducing the size by another 1,000 foot that would make it more equivalent to three times my house size would be a bad thing for the other property values around me because it will depress my value. I know that she's trying to sell her property, but eventually I would like to sell mine and I would like to live there currently without having too many people in, in, living with me in my backyard. So I appreciate your, your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak in opposition? Got a few more minutes? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. Oh, you did want, oh, you may.
Texas being displayed, I thought that there was a more updated version than that. There were a couple of changes from that, not, not significant. The vegetative screen would be fully opaque within two years instead of three years. There were a couple of small changes. I can follow up with an email after the fact.
Well, we can, we'll, we'll need to know those tonight so that if we do take action, that they're, that they're captured. So if you want to just take a moment to, if you can roll through this quickly, otherwise we can call you up to clarify that so that we make sure everybody's on the same page.
Ms. Housley might be able to.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and then we'll just do this as an informational, not a rebuttal back and forth. How about that?
Thank you.
Oh, hey, do you have a, a motion and an active, an active motion and second, please vote for the closure. That public hearing is closed. Just sit tight and we'll call you back up here. So are there any questions immediately that any of the Commissioners have other than to clarify, clarify those differences? Sam, if you want to go ahead and tell us what those changes are so that we can, are they in this packet?
They, they are, they are not. We may have to submit a red line of this. We have it in front of us now.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll do all that on the fly because if we, like I said, if we do take action tonight, we're going to need to capture those changes tonight.
On number one, the vegetative screen would be within two years of planting, not three. This is not, because that's for 17.
Okay.
That's the wall. Scrolling down. Condition number 10 is correct. Condition number 17, again, would say within two years of planting. Oh, that, that one is correct.
We actually do have two years on our copy.
So that one is correct.
Yeah, we're on 17, please.
And those are the only changes. Those are the only corrections.
Okay, so the only correction here then is that first reference to a two-year planting screening on number one.
Yes.
Would, are you in agreement with that, Ms. Housley?
Yes. Can I see number 17 one more time?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, it's toward the, fence is on 17 as well. 17?
Yes. Okay, yeah.
Thank you. I believe that's, that's, those, that was the only change.
You want to add into that fence and just make the gentleman feel more comfortable?
Well.
That they have to maintain the fence.
I would say a ma, a maintenance clause in there with respect, rather than a materials clause.
Yeah, just making a maintenance clause. They got to keep it in good standing.
There, there is, the last sentence of number 17 says the buffer and the screen and the.
Perpetually maintained.
Perpetually maintained. So we did go ahead and put that in there.
Right, so if he's worried about that, they have to keep it up.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions? One of the things, Counselor, just as a, just to clarify, or even Tom, you could probably advise on this. On number 14, where they're, they're referencing this bicycle parking and scenic sitting areas, it's still referring to it as urban village, which I realize these are, this is a zoning condition amendment, not a zoning change, but I think it would be more clear just to say parcel, since it's no longer part of a larger urban village. You think that would?
I agree.
Okay, so on number 14, I'd like to change that last, instead of the urban village, it should be the parcel. I think that gives more clarity.
Just a comment. I did get to sit in on the first meeting, or maybe it wasn't the first meeting, but a meeting and.
The first meeting, I think, when we got everybody to the table.
I, I just appreciated the way the spirit with which everybody came together and worked on the zoning. And I, I appreciate an applicant that gives as much as what they were willing to give and people willing to work together and trying to make it be, because old zonings like this, I mean, I've have a lot of them and just the spirit that they were willing to come together and work through it, both sides, was very, was, and to see that the, the sides were sitting together, that says a lot.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It really does.
I agree with that completely, and I know that, you know, Grove Park is in the, is in the crosshairs right now with a lot of incoming development. And, you know, we certainly appreciate the, the strains that are upon y'all right now. And it's been refreshing to kind of bring you guys together and, and sit back and be able to watch the negotiations go by without, without us really having to steer and direct that too much.
And a lot to get really out of control and a lot of them are politically motivated.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think we've gotten to a point right here and I, you know, kind of like asked for a board to discuss this. And I don't know if this will be popular with everyone, but, you know, we've gotten this far to where we're, we're literally within a 10-foot width of the building. And it's not bringing it closer to the, to this, to the rear line. We were able to keep that original 80-foot setback, which, which is in this day and age, a pretty incredible feat. So in that we've kept it down to, to a, a single level building and it's not moving closer to that setback, my inclination is to do one of two things, which is to, to go ahead and grant that additional 10-foot of building width or to, to play Solomon and split the baby and go with a 500 feet. You know, I don't, I'd, I'd like to kind of ask.
They seem to be, they seem to be getting along.
Well, they do and, you know.
I think they should get the 6,000 because they didn't do two-story.
Or split the baby, either way you want to do it.
But I feel like they've given and given, and they did the berm and they did the, the trees on top of it. When everybody's worked everything out and you start trying to nitpick at the final hour and try to cut it down another 1,000, it doesn't sound like much unless you're the person doing the building and you're the one not getting the rent. And 1,000 more feet is a lot when you're the person losing.
It may help them cover all of these fences and plantings and everything else that they're putting in the pot. And that may be possibly the reason why they agreed.
And especially when you're not moving the building closer to them. You got all that, you got all that setback.
Oh, I don't know. Commissioner's motion is yours, so.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the AZ 180012 with the displayed conditions, with the changes to condition number one, referencing a two-year planting period for opaque vegetative screen, with number 14, changing the wording out from urban village to parcel and limiting the square footage of the building to no more than 6,000 square feet, with none of that square footage moving back towards the, the placement that is shown. Moving back toward the rear, the rear area and from the attached site plan and referencing the site plan as part of the application.
Second.
Is that clear?
It is clear, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask, with respect to condition one, so that third line from the bottom would read fully opaque vegetative screen within two years.
Correct.
That's, that's what was intended.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That is my motion. I do have a second. All in favor, please, or all, please vote. And that does pass five to zero. Thank you, everyone, for your cooperation. I really appreciate. I think everybody put a lot into this, so I think, I think you'll all end up with a good product. Thank you.
Madam Chair, one, one moment, very quickly, if I could, just on point of order.
There was a maintenance clause in there with respect to that, with perpetual maintenance on that fence, if that was your question? Because I see the fence in the.
Number 17, I think it was.
Madam Chair, I would just request.
We include all attachments or all?
Just that we call out, and we can do this by way of an addition.
Just that we call out and we can do this by way of an additional motion. I think that's perfectly fine. That just you make a motion that the requested variances are approved as well. I just wasn't in the motion. I wanna make sure.
Oh, thank you.
We always get caught up with that, whether the variances were intended to be included.
Right, we're so focused on conditions.
That's right.
Thank you. I'd like to amend that mo- amend the motion or a separate motion?
I don't have any problem with you making just a separate motion. That's fine.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Yeah, please, uh, we have a motion, a second, please vote.
And that, are we positive that we got the perpetual?
It's in there.
It is the wording, okay.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, moving along. Public hearing number four has been postponed to March seventh. Public hearing number five, Tom Brown.
AZ 180035, located in Commission District Number One. It's a public hearing for Stanger's Cross Ties and Landscape Material, Inc., regarding the amendment of condition number fifteen placed on zoning application three, four, zero, eight.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm a...
Second.
A motion, second, please vote. That public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here, either the applicant or their representatives here, to speak in favor of this application?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name's Ethan Underwood with Miles Hands for Talent. Respectfully, it was, we, there is a sketch plat, I'm sorry, a conditional use permit that is winding its way through the planning commission and it was supposed to have gone last month. It didn't and consequently, we're really not ready to go with this tonight. What we would request is that we let the conditional use permit catch up with this and that you hold another public hearing when it's time.
Would you like...
I move.
Thank you.
Do we have to close the public hearing first?
Well, we need to close a public hearing, but we'll, we'll get there. We already have opened a public hearing, so if anybody wants to speak, this is their opportunity. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in opposition? Because there may be somebody who prepared to be here. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Please vote. That public hearing is closed. Commissioners, would you, someone like to offer a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion. We postpone this and add for advertisement and an additional public hearing on March seventh.
Just for, before we vote, is that going to give you enough time for everything to catch up if we move this to March seventh?
Let, uh, I have notes from my staff on that topic, Madam Chair, and it says the conditional use permit application scheduled for the BOC meeting on February twenty-first. We would not have enough time to advertise for that date, so, um, March seventh, we can advertise. But the conditional use permit will get to you two weeks from now and then you would have to postpone that to the seventh to match up with this.
Okay, so I'm gonna try, has anybody given a second on that motion yet?
I did.
Commissioner Lavin, let me just ask a question. So we've had the duly required public hearing this evening. So if we wanted to make it for decision only, we could do that. Now, you have every right to do another public hearing, should you choose to.
We move it all, and then, Mr. Underwood, do you mind if we go to the twenty-first, then when this comes in the February session, we move that to the twenty-first of March as well?
What, what I was hoping we could do is we could have the public hearing on March the seventh and then postpone the decision until the conditional use catches up on two weeks later.
That makes sense. Is that okay with y'all? So my motion stands then.
So that's, right, and then at that time, we'll ask for a decision to be delayed.
Fair enough. Please remind us when we get there.
Tom, is that, you seem to have some little consternation on that.
Well, and Ethan may know better than I. I, I was thinking the cup was going to beat this and that the, the conditional use permit was gonna get here February twenty-first.
But you haven't had a chance...
You mentioned March twenty-first. If it's March twenty-first, then that's, that'd be fine.
The conditional use permit will get to Planning Commission in February. Then we would have the public hearing on this zoning condition amendment on March the seventh. And then both the, the zoning condition amendment and the cup would come to the Board of Commissioners on the twenty-first of March.
I agree with that. I think, I think my note was before the Planning Commission meeting was changed.
Okay, so we'll anticipate that these align on the twenty-first. But right now, the motion is to add another public hearing on the, on the seventh and we have an active motion. Did you withdraw your second?
I think, do we vote on this already? Is that why it's all lit up green?
We had a second, I think we withdrew.
We've already voted. The whole board's green.
Well, there we go.
Yeah.
The information we have is there was a second, but no vote has been called.
Yeah, we're good.
The board wasn't cleared.
And we're not gonna redo the vote. I think we're fine, right?
It's not cleared.
You need to take a vote, though.
It hasn't, the board wasn't cleared.
Clerk is saying we voted.
They did vote. Oh, I see. Okay, so the actual votes were cast, but the result was not called.
And that's when you came back and said something after we voted.
Okay, we will be, the result then is we take this public hearing on the seventh. The vote is five to zero. Moving on. Public hearing number six. Tom.
AZ 180033, this is located in Commission District Number Five. It's a public hearing for sixty-seven thirty Browns, Brownsbridge Road LLC regarding the amendment of condition number one and five placed on zoning application nineteen sixty-nine.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone in favor of this application, please come forward.
Commissioner, my name's David Johnson. I live at ninety-one, ninety-four Lake Sideway. I've lived in Forsyth County about twenty years and I'm representing sixty-seven thirty Brownsbridge Road LLC for the shopping center. I live about, um, seven miles from the shopping center and, um, the amendment that we're trying, the two amendments that we're trying to, um, amend for the zoning conditions, one is to allow, uh, the entrance drive on Little Mill Road. The main reason for that is Brownsbridge Road has become, is gonna be four-lane eventually and the traffic is just getting outrageous and trying to make a left out of one entrance on the, um, in the shopping center has become very dangerous and, and there's a light at the intersection of Little Mill and three sixty-nine. And so the, um, the entrance, another entrance onto Little Mill would alleviate that problem in, in our minds and, um, and so, in, in order to make the shopping center a lot more safe, that, um, that's what we're proposing as a request for that zoning condition. And the second zoning condition amendment is to allow a drive-through on one end of the shopping center. Right now, it's, um, the shopping center's designed for a drive-through. It used to be a dry cleaners. And, um, and we have a potential tenant that is a restaurant that, that's requesting a drive-through as a condition of them coming as, as a tenant. And so, that's, um, the second amendment is, is we want to allow the shopping center to have the drive-through for this tenant and, uh, and we plan on designing it to Forsyth County standards. And, and that's basically, that's basically it.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna call, see if there's anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak in favor of this application. Please come forward. If you haven't turned in a form, please do so after you're completed.
Neighborhood right behind, at the retail center.
I, I need your name and...
I'm sorry.
There you go.
My name is Al Webster. I live in Forsyth County, near his shopping center. And, um, and I go by it every day. In fact, I had to pass it on the way, uh, to here. Never see anybody in there and I'm a little concerned that they, uh, one day I may see a boarded-up retail center. And what the gentleman is requesting to do does not bother me as one of the neighbors. I live, I have to go down Little Mill Road. If they put a nice, uh, you know, I don't eat at Subway that much. It's good food. I just don't do it because it's, you have to walk in. Drive-through, hey, we're all lazy. So if there was a drive-through, Burger King, doesn't matter what it is, hey, I might, I might think it's cool to come down Little Mill Road, not have to go out on Brownsbridge Road just to get into the parking lot. Because right now, in order to get in the parking lot without having to go out on Brownsbridge Road, I have to jump the curb and I can't do that in my Toyota Prius. I gotta wait till I get a truck. Um, I've done it on my bicycle before. Anyway, um, I think, you know, it's a reasonable request. Certainly, I know there's a lot of my neighbors that are not gonna like me anymore because I've seen the circulation coming around the neighborhood that, hey, we don't want this because there will be more light and there'll be noise and we'll be listening to people ordering french fries at midnight. Well, the nearest home is, mine is probably as close as anybody's and I don't think I'm gonna hear the drive-through. So I'm sure we're gonna hear from maybe some of the other people that don't want it, but I think that trying to, uh, prevent this gentleman from benefiting from a potential new tenant that could mean the difference between keeping the shopping center open and keep, and having it go out of business would be far better for everybody involved than denying, uh, his ability to attract a, a better tenant or a new tenant that will help pay the bills because, um, I understand how expensive it is to run a retail center from past experience. So, I, I would like just to, to say as a neighbor that's as close as anybody, I have no objections and I think it would benefit me, not only because I could get to some fast food quicker, but also because I don't want an abandoned retail center that I pass by every time I leave my home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you have not turned in a public comments form, please do so over there. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? We have a few minutes reserved here. If you'd like to reserve those for rebuttal, if there's anyone else who would like to come forward. All right, I'm going to call for anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this application to please come forward at this time.
Good evening. My name is Mike Rudolph. I live on Little Mill Road approximately, uh, maybe four hundred feet from this establishment. And I want to say I'm adamantly opposed to the proposed changes that ran AZ 180033. Previously, the Board of Commissioners decided to change the zoning of this property from what was, I think, vacation cottage to commercial business, despite, uh, despite strong opposition from the residents and, and the recommendation against it from the Planning Commission. Regardless, they agreed to make this commercial property. I think they did have the foresight to put very specific conditions in when they approved this zoning change. And frankly, nothing has changed since those conditions were put in for this piece of property and for the adjacent neighborhoods. So I see no reason these changes should be applied at this point in time. Residents moved here and lived here for a lake lifestyle. Increased development and traffic on this property intrudes in their lifestyle. It intrudes on the enjoyment of their homes and likely harms their property values. Now there is increasing pollution of all sorts in the area. Light pollution already taking away from a view of the stars on dark nights. When we first moved here about fifteen years ago, uh, my youngest son was so jazzed about the awesome stars that the only thing he wanted was a telescope. And now we can hardly see the stars at night. Noise pollution will increase with more traffic, more cars, more trucks, more deliveries, more trash pickups and other things. Trash and litter will get worse from the fast food restaurants. We already are subjected to subway wrappers up and down the street. We really don't need plastic styrofoam hamburger boxes thrown out around the area as well. Lake Lanier, especially the Four Mile Creek area, does not need more pollution. Runoff will increase, deceptive load will increase, which cannot be good for the lake. Four Mile Creek Cove is only about nine hundred feet from this building and about five hundred feet from the edge of the property this investor owns. Currently, regarding this request, condition one states, there shall be no entrance or access to this property from Little Mill Road or Diana Circle. Previous applications have been submitted to access Little Mill Road from this property. Each time, the Board of Directors have responded on behalf of the residents in what's in the best interest of the residents and the county. Nothing has changed now. There would be more traffic in the neighborhoods that have no outlets. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but that stretch on Little Mill Road has no outlets. Many of the streets do not have a turnaround or cul-de-sac. So any increased traffic results in people coming in and out, stopping, throwing away trash, turning around in driveways. Not something we all desire. This will increase traffic on Little Mill Road for residents, causing backups and delays, potentially becoming a cut-through to avoid the intersection. School hours are already an absolute mess in this area, if you've ever been there. As with other school areas in Forsyth County, this will likely become a drop-off and pick-off point, pickup point for students of Little Mill School as parents try to avoid the severe traffic fiasco around the school currently. That means eleven and fourteen-year-olds would be crossing Brownsbridge Road to wait here for parents to pick up and drop off. And this happens in other schools. You see it when you drive by any of these schools during their time of pickup. The proposed changes, as written, would allow for game rooms and fast food drive-through on the property. This is not in our best interest, not appropriate for our community. Certainly not with a middle school about a hundred yards away. The county and community does not need or benefit from a gathering place for middle school children. The applicant indicates a potential tenant would provide a service currently not available for up to nine miles from this property. I really find it hard to believe or imagine that there's a service they could offer that's not available between this property and Highway four hundred. Also noteworthy, the access to Little Mill Road has no bearing whatsoever on the prospective tenant's requirement for a drive-through. I have no animosity towards this investor or fast food restaurants. And I do want to say I appreciate this investor's offer in willingness to maintain the zoning for no, or the provision for no outdoor loudspeakers or no outdoor voice amplification. That's critical in this area. It, it's right next to the lake and all that sound from that area comes straight across the cove and the lake to everybody's back decks and everybody's docks. I think we should all be clear that these two conditions, along with other conditions, were put in place for good reasons, specifically to protect the communities, the residents and the Lake Lanier environment. With all respect to the investor, the conditions were conspicuously in place when the property was purchased. The conditions are bound to the property and an expectation that the conditions should be excused at the detriment of the community and county is not appropriate. I think simply because an investment was made and the return is not coming as expected, that should not justify a change in the conditions the property had. Nothing is different now in this area that would substantiate a change in the conditions specified originally in ZA nineteen sixty-nine. Therefore, I strongly urge you, the Board of Commissioners, to vote no on this application. It is not in the best interest of the residents, the community or the county. Thank you.
We'll have some time remaining. If there's anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak in opposition to this application, please do so at this time. You can turn it in afterwards. Just make sure you give your name when you speak.
My name is Bill Manley. I live at sixty-three thirty Barbary Hill Place. Strongly oppose this. The backup on the, on the road right now is, is horrible on both sides. It's really would be a lot worse if any exit out of that shopping center came out to Little Mill Road. I mean, just coming over here, it's hard to get out of the intersection either way you go. And, uh, I agree with Mike's one hundred percent on everything he came up with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us, uh, hearing us. I'm Jopur Santi. I live in Barbary Hill, sixty-three, uh, forty-five Barbary Hill Drive. Um, I agree with both of the speakers ahead of me. Um, I think what y'all need to really consider too is the access of this lot would be so close to the intersection of Brownsbridge Road. I mean, basically feet. So as you come out of this intersection onto Little Mill Road and turn, you've got a turning lane going left on Brownsbridge Road and a lane going straight over Brownsbridge Road to Little Mill where the school is. And this backup is a mess. Uh, the lights are being changed in that area right now, thank goodness, to make it a lot safer. But the way this access is gonna be, the people will, when you come down Little Mill Road, past the school on a school-ending day, you will see cars backed up for probably one or two miles down Little Mill Road. Those people... Those people are going to drop their kids off at that Subway or soda shop or game shop and zip in there and try to pick them up and come back out. I really believe that you really need to look at this carefully. It's been turned down before for very good reason. There isn't a space there. It's too close to Brownsbridge Road. If they want to put a turning lane in for their property down Brownsbridge Road, then that's their option. It shouldn't be impinged on Little Mill Road because they want an easier access that should have been taken from Brownsbridge Road in the beginning. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you haven't filled out a form, please, please do so. Got about little under two minutes left. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition, in favor? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Do they have a rebuttal?
Well, I called for both.
Because I, unless you want to do questions, I do have a bunch.
Yeah, we can do question and answer. I just, is there a motion to close the public hearing? I'm a, we have motion second, please vote. That public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. Commissioners, I'm sure you have questions.
Are we allowed to ask people to come back up to clarify a couple of things for questions? Mr. Gerard?
Of course.
Against the applicant first, sir, you still here? First, are you a property owner or you have any legal background in this zoning process?
I am a property owner. I own my house.
I didn't know, you may not have known, but you had an opportunity on your time that was left to do a rebuttal, but instead I'll just ask a few questions here.
Okay.
Yeah, he may not have understood completely because he hadn't been through it a lot. What is the distance from the proposed driveway to 369? How far, sir?
About 100 feet.
Do you agree with them that it may increase business at your shopping center if this happens?
Yeah, I do. It'll increase business. If there's a, if there's an entrance drive there, it will certainly increase business because of the entrance drive. Currently, it's very difficult to get out and take a left going back towards 400. And it's difficult to, if you're coming towards 400, to take a left to get in.
And you built the shopping center there to create business?
We bought the shopping center after it was already built.
Gotcha. And you, without business, what happens?
Without business?
Yeah.
We'll have to sell it. I mean, we won't, we won't have any business.
Will there be value to the property if there's no business?
No, sir.
Only thing that concerns me is the 100 feet though. Because I, where's engineering? Engineering. 100 feet from a state highway, will they even allow you to have a driveway come out that close?
If this zoning condition gets amended to allow an entrance on Little Mill Road, then it'll have to be designed in compliance with County Ordinance 101. So it'll have to comply with the county requirements for spacing from the intersection.
Do, does 100 feet qualify?
100 foot would qualify.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. John, just to give us an idea of what, 100 feet or less, or is that within the range?
I'm not sure off the top of my head. I just, but I do know 100 feet would meet that requirement.
I have one more question, I guess. So we see this from time to time on shopping centers that exist out there from way back zonings, 20, 30 years ago, whatever. And as traffic increases, the county then starts to add in no left turns because it becomes a lot of accidents in those locations. Or that's part of the zoning conditions. If they put a driveway in there, they cannot make a left out of it because of the danger that it creates that some of these people are concerned about.
Like a right in, right, like a right in, right out?
It has to be a right out only.
Right in, or right in.
Right in, right out only.
Right out, yes, yes, sir.
Because otherwise, I would have to agree with some of these folks. It could be a little bit dangerous.
John, with, with the way it is right now, and I understand the neighbors' concerns and the way that the shopping center, I mean, it was zoned, but none of us were on the board when they made the decision to put the shopping center there. But when you look at it and, and you know, when it was zoned, there was no school anticipated to go there, or the school hadn't been built and the traffic wasn't there. But when you think about, there's a red light there now, and all of us know you are safer turning left at a red light. We've heard people, I mean, we heard how many people get up and talk about the gentleman that died and didn't have a light. And, and you're looking at this plan, and we're all sitting here looking at the possibility of somebody turning left on a truck route with trucks, diesels, coming, going no telling how fast. And we're, we're making a decision tonight of making people have no ability to go left at a light and forcing them to go not at a light. I mean, it, it's a, I mean, if we were sitting here with this, I mean, with this shopping center before us, I mean, we would be making them go to a light to take a left. I mean, it is a, I get noise and I get, I get not wanting loudspeakers, and I get right in and right out and trying to produce less traffic. But, I mean, I've just sat in a meeting and heard people crying over and over again about a man getting killed because of a left turn and not having a light.
On a state four-lane highway.
Well, but we, I mean.
I, no, I agree with you.
And we've heard about how much traffic that there is because of the school over and over again. I mean, I, it's, it's a safety issue.
Number five says that it will still have no voice amplified, shall be allowed. So they're still not going to allow it. So I don't know why people kept saying they were going to hear that noise. You've left it in Condition 5. So what is the purpose of the drive-through? Is it for fast food?
It's, yeah, for a restaurant. They don't want to have, they want you to drive up to the window and order at the window.
And talk just without amplified noise.
Or order online or on your phone and, and then come and pick your food up at the window.
So there's no amplified noise still, so what we heard doesn't exist.
No voice box or amplification.
Could it be designed that nobody, you could make no left turns, like, so people wouldn't turn in Little Mill, like you could use this drive to go right in here.
Right.
But you wouldn't turn in Little Mill to take a left in. You see what I'm saying? Like, so we wouldn't make anybody, the only way you could come out of the shopping center would be to go right.
That's what I was saying, right in, right out.
So right in, right out on both sides.
But how would they then get to the traffic like to make their left on the 369 safely?
You'd just go right out.
Okay.
I mean, you could go back behind and you'd go right, right out and left. So nobody would go out unless they were going left on 369 or straight across.
Is this restaurant a fast food restaurant? Considered one or not really?
It's not, not, it's, the people that own Burger and Shake want to do that restaurant as well as a biscuit place for the mornings.
I got you. Okay.
And it's not necessarily the Burger and Shake, but, and they, they own eight franchises right now, and, and they want to, they think that this area is a good location for it.
And you're asking for, just to come out of Little Mill, you're still not asking for any access on Diana Circle?
On Diana Court? No, no, sir. No access on that, just on Little Mill. Just to have access to the light to turn left instead of having to turn left out the entrance drive now to cross over the one lane and then cross over a suicide lane and then get into the straight lane. And in the DOT's plan is to widen that, widen 369 to a four-lane road with probably either a median or a suicide lane too.
There's a new county ordinance. It's called, I believe, a no-cut-through ordinance. And if you, as a landowner, calls, I think it's our county manager or notifies attorney or our engineering department, they will erect a sign at both of your entrances. And with that, law enforcement can enforce that law. So just know when this thing cut through, would you be willing to have that, those signs erected?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is your hours? What is your business hours?
Subway closes at nine. And, and so I would assume, I don't, I don't, I've been over there at night and I've rarely seen anybody past nine, but Burger and Shake closes at nine as well.
Could we put that, could we make that a zoning? Could we say?
And I do have the orig, I have the set of, the full set of zoning conditions on that property. I mean, one of the things that was referenced with one of the residents was a concern regarding game rooms and something like that. So we may have some additional conversations to take place between the applicant and the neighbors. Because I think there's some opportunity to build in some, some confidence in what they can have an expectation of coming in there. As, you know, one of, one of the gentlemen who spoke on your behalf, no one wants to see a derelict property there. I think that invites more problems. But I think there's an opportunity when you're looking at a zoning that was crafted in 1996 with some very little minor changes made in, you know, maybe seven, six, seven years ago, six, seven, eight years ago, to maybe look at putting in some additional no-nasties clauses, things like that, that would, you know, show some good faith on your part. And that usually addresses things like, you know, tattoo parlors, vape shops, those, those kinds of things.
You got good trees buffer back there?
We do.
You do?
And some of that.
No.
But I think, you know.
Yeah, you could postpone and.
I, that's, and that's where I'm headed with this. I'd like to bring this back for decision, but I'd like to have some opportunity to bring you guys all into the same room because I think that there's some benefits to be gained for the community and looking over some of the things that had not been included in previous that would very likely, based on what you're telling me that you're planning to do with the property, would probably be amenable to you as well, but would give them a confidence level of the quality of what's going in there. So if you guys don't mind, I would, I would like to go ahead and take that opportunity in the next couple of weeks, maybe bring this back in March. Yes, sir.
You have to come to the podium though, please.
If you'll come up.
It's got, it's just.
Yeah, because I think there's some opportunity here. I know, I mean, I'm sure you don't want, the idea of that turning into a derelict property is probably going to do worse for your property values than having a viable business in there that's a good neighbor.
No, of course, we, no one's an empty building.
Right.
I will say, I think you have more tenants now than you've had in the last three years.
Correct.
So I'm not sure that the entrance to the, access to the property has any bearing on, on the ability to lease the property.
Okay.
Safety.
Well, I think we could, again, look at some of these create, you know, right in, right out types scenarios that are not going to encourage additional traffic traveling down Little Mill toward your direction. And those are all things that we can, can discuss at that point because according to our ordinance and the comments that I had, because I'd solicited comments, I've gone back and looked at all of the history on this zoning and the different zoning conditions along the way. And, you know, staff had indicated that, that our engineering department never had a concern with having that entrance onto Little Mill. And so with the idea that, you know, the intensity on 369 is going to continue, it may be in everyone's interest to try to plan for that and have some safe, controlled entrance and egress from that property that would ultimately.
Okay, well, that's up to you. I would, I would say the 100-foot length doesn't provide for that. All it provides for is congestion, frankly.
If I may, one more thing. Madam Chair, it's her district.
I understand.
But I think she's offering a postponement to try to work through this because there's a possibility, if we pull the vote right now, we may approve all this. And you may benefit better if you have a meeting with everybody and getting additional conditions put on this property and working through this.
Yeah, I'd like to look at some.
I do appreciate that. Based on your questioning, then I feel sure the vote would go that way. So I appreciate your support.
Yeah, some of the, some, I'd like to look at an opportunity to put in some of the things that enhance what type of tenants are going to see in that property and, and perhaps even, you know, have some, some restrictions with respect to off-site, parking for off-site businesses, that everything has to be related to the businesses there. I have, I live near South Forsyth Middle School, and I know all of the parents park in CVS and McDonald's to go pick up their kids. So I know exactly what you're talking about.
Kids crossing 369 is not a good idea, and that's going to happen.
I, I don't disagree. So I understand your concern, and I think there are some things that we can do to address that because honestly, even if, if that, if that shopping center were to fold today and, and there would still be parents parked in that parking lot. And there'd be even more spaces for them to park in to wait for their kids. So I think it's an opportunity for us to all come together.
I appreciate the opportunity and would love to hear that.
Okay, thank you.
My last, my last thing, and I sent a letter to you guys and never heard anything back. The attachments are not legible.
Okay.
Okay.
And without those legible attachments, we can't see what the plan is.
Okay, well, we will bring full-size maps to the meeting so everybody can see what's being proposed. You know, I think there's some ways to contain that as well. One of the recommendations that our engineering department had given was that if we were to allow a drive-up window as opposed to a drive-through, that it would be appropriate to limit it to the easternmost part of the property. So carrying it away from Little Mill and putting it only on that end unit, and that is the unit that they're anticipating using. So these are all things I'd like to bring to, sitting down at the table and, and trying to hash out some details and bring it back. So I'm going to.
May I ask, Counselor, one thing before you go?
Certainly.
So Counselor, I had a meeting last night, and sir, this will be relevant to your case.
Okay.
And we had a bunch of people that are making a lot of comments and all the reasons why they didn't want a certain thing in their area. And we had Counselor there, legal Counselor there, and they said to come up with your legal items that you want to have standing on, on land use reasons, not speculative reasons. Get into our Chapter 8, and you'll find all the shalls and shall-nots, and you will, help you build or understand what you can build on or not build on a lot better. And you will find that in our website. So by the time you get to our meeting, if you take a look at that, you'll understand that speculating kids may come in or may not is not a land use item for us. It's really legally, I don't think we can use that as a land use tool to decide land use or not. Counselor, would you agree or not agree?
I agree that we need to focus on the performance standards of the zoning and the allowable uses under our code. And what may or may not be able to actually be economically built there is of lesser consideration than the performance standards under the applicable zoning designation.
And that's also, if you go in Chapter 8, you'll see some of those standards, and it'll help you look at what you've written and what grabs and what may not grab so much.
No, it's a very emotional appeal. It's not a legal.
Sir, I, and we can't make land decisions on emotional appeals. I appreciate it. I really do understand it, but yeah.
All right, well, let's, let's get some, do, within the next two, you know, next two weeks, you think that should give us all sufficient time to get all the people here? And then, you know, I can move this out to the 21st, or I can go ahead and give it a full month and put it out to the 7th of March to bring it back. It would come back as old business, so we will have had all of the discussion and public hearing aspects of it at that point. So I would like to make a motion to bring this back as old business on the 7th for decision only with additional discussion to be had with both sides. We have a motion, second, please vote. That motion does pass with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And we're getting in touch with everybody to set that up. Number seven, Tom.
AZ 180032, this is in Commission District Number 5. It's Public Hearing for Roger D. Hammond Family LLC regarding the amendment of Condition Number 3 and 4, placed on zoning application 3367.
Do we have a motion to open the pub? Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, please vote. The public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. Would anyone speaking in favor of this application, please come forward?
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners, Ethan Underwood here on behalf of Roger D. Hammond Family LLC. We are requesting a zoning modification in response to a letter that Mr. Hammond received fairly recently. It was dated November 15th, 2018, and it was asking him to dedicate without compensation right-of-way for the widening of two state highways. Admittedly, these zoning conditions exist. This property was zoned some time back, I believe in 2004, and the existing condition says the developer shall dedicate right-of-way for 60 feet, and the developer shall dedicate right-of-way 75 feet to Keith Bridge. We've asked to remove that. Now, we're not asking to say that it won't be reserved because we understand that the state can, can widen the road. However, this condition is being purported from the other letter from the engineering department, says that it has to be given for no compensation. This is the property, I'm sure you're very familiar with it, it's the Walgreens at Hammond's The property had a site. The property had a site development permit, it was approved by Forsyth County with the existing 100-foot rights-of-way in 2006, and then it was as-built. So it was approved, it's been operating for over 11 years as a Walgreens. The problem that we've got, though, and you can see, even see in the site plan and back in the as-built, as-built, there was consideration for the widening of the road, however, it wasn't required to be given at no cost. This is the area that the Hammond family would have to give to the state and not be compensated for, and we would submit to you, this is going to drastically affect their economic interest in this. One, we do have the right-of-way along 306 that is reserved. However, getting into the driveway, the drive-around around Walgreens, this has got a significant economic impact. We understand that the state of Georgia has the right of condemnation, but they also have to compensate the Hammond family for any impact that has. Now, there's nothing more boring than being lectured about zoning law, but, but I do want to put this forward to you, that we recognize that a property owner can be required under Georgia law to pay the cost of public improvements that are necessitated by that zoning project. That's very clear, Court of Appeals told us that in 2007 in the Combs case. But a zoning condition must be imposed pursuant to the police power for the protection or benefit of neighbors, and it has to be designed to ameliorate, ameliorate the effects of that specific zoning change. It can't be a system improvement. And then finally, getting into federal law and into Fifth Amendment jurisprudence, the government may not require a person to go up the right to receive just compensation when the legitimate interest in mitigation of a product's impact lacks an essential nexus and is not roughly proportional to those impacts. That gets, again, lawyers running off at the mouth, but what that means is, an essential nexus has to exist when a problem is created by that development. There is no essential nexus if, if the traffic is not created and the need for the road widening is not created specifically by that development. Moreover, it has to bear, even if there's a essential nexus, let's say certain roads need to be widened, we understand that, but it has to be reasonable in its relationship to the projected impact of that specific development under federal law. Looking at this particular project, the project was as-built 11 years ago, and traffic flowed. We know it's gotten more, we know it needs to be widened now, but we can certainly say that the traffic has not been caused by the Walgreens develop. Any need to widen those state highways can't be, can't be claimed to be caused by that. And more importantly, GDOT has not asked Forsyth County to acquire right-of-way and say, well, hey, don't make them, don't make us pay for it. But that's exactly what this zoning condition does. It says you have to give your land to the state and not be compensated for it, even though GDOT, which has its own power of condemnation, has not asked for that. So with that, we respectfully request that you remove these zoning conditions, or even modifying to say it has to be reserved. We understand you don't want putting new buildings on there that's going to increase the cost of condemnation, but to tell the Hammond family that you got to give the land and not be paid for it by the state is, is not appropriate. With that, we reserve all of our rights and the right to rebut. We're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come on.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, please vote. Public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. Discussion, Commissioners.
Mr. Underwood.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to bounce between you and our Counsel, if you don't mind. You did a good presentation leaning back on the Constitution and the US laws, but you made one comment that, you said that GDOT has not asked us to do that. Do you have a letter stating that?
No, sir, but I have, I've, I've been doing this for 15 years, and I have run into this situation with GDOT, and I've called them and said, on many occasions, and said, do you ask local municipalities to acquire land for you and, and have them not pay for it? And the answer is, we would never do that. So the answer to the question is, we get it, you know, if, if the government can acquire land cheaper, it gets roads built faster. We understand that. However, the Hammond family is not willing to give this land without compensation, it's going to have significant impact upon this particular project, they just want to be paid for it. That's all we're asking for.
Counselor, do you saw his claims, and I can't remember, what was that, in California, was it another location through the US District Courts? Do you agree with what he's shown?
Do I agree that those are accurate excerpts from cases? Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure they are. I mean, I'm not, haven't researched them in real time and didn't get advance, you know, look at the presentation, but I'm sure that they are accurate excerpts. But I suspect that given some time, I could provide my own excerpts.
Mr. Brown, Tom, is it, is it a standard practice when a zoning application is submitted for the property owner to provide an authorization for his property to be rezoned, if it's not by himself, by someone else?
Yes, it's required.
Thank you. And that practice was in place back in 2006, when Mr. Hammond executed an agreement that states within it, I realize that any zoning condition placed on my, on the property will be binding upon the property.
We had, in 2006, we did require a property owner authorization, yes.
Thank you. And that we do have such a form on file with the county, that fully executed and notarized. We do.
I can only imagine we do, and I'd have to pull the file and check that.
Thank you. Is there a, is, do you rebut that?
Respectfully, it doesn't really matter, Madam Chair, because we can't authorize the Board of Commissioners to enact an unconstitutional zoning condition. We believe the zoning condition, even if it was affirmed back in 2004, is unconstitutional, and we're asking this as a, as a method of exercising administrative remedy to try to get that taken off.
Counselor, would you agree with that?
That it's unconstitutional? No.
Thank you. Do you think that it may have been consideration that, that applicant also asked for variances which were granted for parking, buffers, and setbacks? That that may have been part of the consideration given when they were asked to set aside that property for the GDOT widening that everyone knew would be coming, and that it was prudent for the county to plan that far ahead?
Well, again, I don't believe that approving a variance, that would be contract zoning, so I don't think that would be lawful either.
Well, it may not be contract zoning, but I would say as part of the larger conversation, do you feel that your client was somehow damaged being able to construct their as-built application and having been granted all of the variances that they requested for that, that they are in some way damaged now by having to fulfill the obligations of those zoning conditions that they agreed to?
Respectfully, I don't think that those, those conditions are constitutional. I mean, I'm not asking you to agree with me, but I am saying that I don't think it's right, and I don't think a court would find it proper to say, we'll give you a zoning if you give us land for free.
It's not contract zoning, I'm saying it's part of the larger package that they, they agreed for, to, they asked for variances, they agreed to conditions. Those weren't necessarily tethered to each other, but they were all part of the larger agreement. So do we throw the whole thing out if they agreed to conditions, but they still want their variances, they still want all of the rest of the, the components of that zoning, except for those? I mean, that's why you're here, for a zoning condition amendment, but we have an executed document that states that they were aware of those conditions, and, you know, they were able to, to build as they had planned, they've been in operation for all this time, we know these widenings are coming, and so I just find the timing very suspect on this.
Respectfully, the zoning condition has to mitigate the impact of this particular project. It goes way beyond that, and we don't think it's constitutional.
You don't believe that should have been raised 13 years ago?
Respectfully, Commissioner, there's not a whole lot of choice when you come before the Commissioners about a lot of these zoning conditions. All I can say is, we challenge them now. We hope that the Board will remove the conditions, and, and if not, then we, we have other avenues we'll have to pursue.
May I ask one more question? Do you know who the representative, do they have legal representation back when they got their zoning?
I, I don't know, Commissioner.
I didn't look up. Madam Chair, do you see if they did?
I, I have the name of the, of the development group, but not the, not this attorney. I'm sure we could find that.
That'd be a little more binding for me if they had legal representation through that process, and they recommended that.
I'm sure they did. I mean, Walgreens came in.
Then, then they, I mean, listen, if they didn't, you could see, if somebody's desperate to get a zoning sometimes, they'll agree to things they don't like, but if they had legal representation.
I mean, this isn't the first time a road's come in and been widened.
I know, I know, I'm not, I'm not against it for, I'm just saying that if they didn't have legal representation, I could see how they might have felt and not understood all of their rights because they didn't have legal representation, but.
I've got a question for John. I mean, along 141, when, I mean, businesses come in along there and they give, they gave up right-of-way, and then 141 was widened, did they all come in and try to take back their conditions? Did we have this issue come up?
We, we pretty much require these same conditions for any development on any state route or county road throughout the county, and I'm not aware of requested zoning condition amendments similar to this in the past.
Ken, are you aware of this?
Aware of the request has been made from time to time, but as a rule, if I was to give sort of a standard practice, we don't receive condition requests like this. One moment.
I've got a follow-up to Cindy's. So John, when we take the property to build the road, do we, how often do we ask them not to get compensated?
For every zoning that comes through, we request those conditions be placed on it if we know we have a future widening project or a future transportation project as outlined in our county's major transportation plan. That's something that the UDC requires, and that's a request that we make as a zoning condition.
All right.
Madam Chair, I do have a.
Thank you, please.
Request to make of you, though, and, and this is, of course, I don't think, I'm not even sure the public hearing has been closed yet, but if it has.
It has.
That's fine.
We're in discussion.
I would request that we postpone the decision. I've got some questions that I want to ask of our engineering department and other matters that I want to take up, and then we can come back, and I'll advise you, of course, and the Board with respect to some of the allegations that have been made this evening, before we take final action, would be my respectful request to the Board.
I, I agree with that. I think that we're, you know, to decide on this this evening would be, to be setting tremendous precedent, particularly since this is a carve-out of one corner of a much larger development, and I would, I would be concerned that, to, to go back to the impact that, that a development of that scale might have on that particular corridor, that it very well, in, in a larger sense, has an impact. One, Walgreens may not have the singular impact, but the entire parcel that was zoned collectively very likely did. So I'm agreeing with you on that.
Keep the road from being done, totally.
Right.
Exactly. So Ken, do you have a recommendation as to when you'd like to bring this back?
I, I think it can come back at the next regular meeting, Madam Chair. I would simply just request a postponement till the February 21st old business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That motion does pass five to zero. We'll be seeing this again under old business on the 21st. Public hearing number eight.
AZ 180031, Commission District Number Four. It's a public hearing for James A. Sarr regarding the amendment of condition number seven placed on zoning application 2454.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for hearing me. I don't have quite the story that most of these people have had tonight, but last June, I moved up to Forsyth County from Gwinnett.
Madam Chair, just a point of order, I think we do need to open the public hearing.
Yeah, yes, sir, I'm so sorry. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Please vote, and we are open with a vote of five to zero. Please proceed, sorry.
Thank you again. As I said, my wife and I moved up here from Gwinnett County to subject property 6790 Jewels Way. There was a shed built in the backyard at the time of the purchase of the house, and it provides a great amount of storage that we needed. Since then, we found that it was set, it was put into the setback of the rear property line of our property, which was set to 60 feet. I understand why the 60 feet was, was set, because it used to be housing right behind my property. There was a house not 10 feet over the property line, and it was for their privacy, and I understand this, but that's no longer the case, those houses have been removed, and that property is now, I think, a Linnell Land Park, so a county-owned property. I'm looking to have that 60-foot setback changed from 60 feet to 25 feet, so that I can keep my shed.
It makes plenty of sense.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come on.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
Sir, if we could get you to fill out a public hearing form, that would be appreciated.
And, and hang tight, because Commissioners may have some questions. Commissioners, discussion, Cindy, I believe this is in your district.
Yes, and I've had no one contact me being opposed, and I know you sent letters out to all your neighbors, and Carol checked with you, and no one responded, you had two come back. So I make a motion that we approve the zoning condition amendment as presented on your screen.
Second.
We have a motion, a second?
Clear, okay.
You have one?
I'm sorry?
Somebody hasn't responded.
Oh, will she ask?
We, we called for, for both in favor and in opposition.
Somebody hasn't responded.
Okay, well, let's, he's out of order now.
Okay, well, we will, we will talk to you afterwards about that. We did have the public hearing already, and we've called for a, a vote, so if everyone will please push their buttons, please. That motion does pass five to zero, sir. If you'd like to get with, with the clerk over here, we can make an arrangement to have that conversation at a later time.
Give him my card.
We're going to move on now to public hearing number nine.
Zoning application 3931, located in Commission District Number Two. This is a public hearing for a county-initiated request to rezone 6.43 acres from M1 to CBD with a conditional use permit to operate a medical office allowing around-the-clock operation. The property is located at 5,050 Research Court.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. And, Tom, just for the, does this reflect your no-nasty list? Because I know there was another one that was submitted at one time, I had spoken to Dennis, is this?
This is an updated list after talking with Commissioner Brown earlier today. It's one that was used recently by the Board of Commissioners for a gas station, and with it, I added all vehicle-based uses under this, under the commercial table as being prohibited.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that we were looking at the actual proposed, proposed list. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And we are open with a vote of five to zero. Anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this application?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Ethan Underwood. We are asking, and we appreciate the Board facilitating this as a county-initiated zoning. You may remember this property, it came to you about three months ago for a conditional use permit for a dialysis clinic, and they needed a, a conditional use permit for 24-hour operation. Well, it's zoned M1, and we asked to have a conditional use permit put on it for the dialysis clinic. What that has spurred, though, is the landlord who owns, who's actually leasing the property, their tenants are retail, sit-down restaurant, office use, and a CBD zoning actually would make a lot more sense than an M1 zoning. So they're asking that it be zoned CBD. We did speak with the dialysis clinic, who's a tenant, they were adamant, that they said they, they have to keep the conditional use permit. So we just want to emphasize to you, they're staying in the building, they're staying as a tenant, but if we're changing the underlying zoning from M1 to CBD, we also need you to reinstate the conditional use permit for a 24-hour business for the dialysis clinic. We are, I did speak with our client, he's comfortable with Commissioner Brown's list, and we, we hope that you will approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come on.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. Commissioner Brown, this is your district.
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve the county-initiated request to rezone the 6.43 acres from M1 to CBD and keep the conditional use permit for the medical office allowing around-the-clock operation for the presenous dialysis, ZA 3931, with the conditions shown on the screen.
Sorry, second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say, or please vote, or, please, everyone please vote, and that motion does pass five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing number 10.
CP 180039, this is in Commission District Number Five. It's a public hearing for a county-initiated request for a conditional use permit to allow warehouse, outside storage, and mini-warehouse on property that's currently zoned CBD. The property is located on Holt's Claw Road.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing? I'm a.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward at this time. Are you all here with this application? You want to come forward and speak on your own behalf? We don't bite. Come on forward.
All right, I was kind of caught off guard with the county-initiated. I didn't realize we were going to have to speak.
That was you.
Yep. My name's Robbie Henderson, I'm representing the Holt's Claw family on this cup. The plan is to continue doing what they've been doing for the past 20 years, open storage, warehouse storage, mini warehouses. We held our public participation meeting, there was no opposition whatsoever. The property owner would just like to continue doing what they've been doing.
Okay, thank you. I, I'll give you the, the background on this just in a moment. Is, would anyone else like to speak? No? I'll let you, you've got a lot of time left, so if anyone comes up to speak in opposition, you, you can rebut if you'd like to. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to this application? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? I'm a.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote, and that public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. So, this is in my district, and I'll, to give you guys some of the background on it, I think I have spoken to one or two of you about this particular situation. We had a property owner that had been doing business on this property, it had been business licenses. I had our planning office go and track the business license history, went all the way back to 1969 on this property, that they had had structures that they were operating, known back as far as, at least as 1965 on the property, operating as a, as a storage, primarily agricultural storage on that property. Some time back, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there was a, that we had a weather event in which one of their structures was, one or more of their structures were damaged to the point of they had to be reconstructed. In the time period that had elapsed between then, we had made a change to our land use, to our comprehensive land use map, where they were just outside of the node that would have allowed them to continue doing business as they were. They participated in, at public participation, they've had no objections. In fact, they've been very willing to take this opportunity to adopt some of the, the newer restrictions we have around open storage with respect to setback from the road and some landscaping and those types of things. And so, you know, I'm, I'm not, I wouldn't be somebody who would take that opportunity to put somebody out of, out of their life's business. And so, with that in mind, I'd like to make.
Before you make your motion.
Yeah.
The 10-foot build setback lines?
There, okay.
Are there any variances on this?
No, there are not. In fact, there are, there is an attached site plan that I'm going to reference to that that shows where all of their, where all of their buildings are and their.
And the proposed new ones will be.
Yes, well, they'll all be, they'll all be in conforming. In fact, normally on a county-initiated rezoning, we don't ask for staff input on that, but I did ask for staff review on this to make sure that it was in conformity with what, had it been an allowable area, that it would have been an acceptable plan. So, with that in mind, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve county-initiated cup number CP 180039 with the atta, with the site plan that is in our books attached. We have a motion, a second, please vote, and that motion passes five to zero. Thank you. You guys are good. Thank you. Public hearing 11.
Madam Chair, Board Members, public hearing number 11. This evening is a second public hearing with respect to a proposed modification to Chapter 50 of the Forsyth County Code. We have referred to this historically as either the synthetic cannabinoid ordinance, K2 spice, et cetera. This has been something the Board of Commissioners has been extremely interested, and in light of their interest in this, we have retooled this proposed ordinance to make it candidly more encompassing, and that was the product of candidly the next three ordinances we're going to be talking about, both dealing with synthetic cannabinoids, et cetera, as well as the alcohol code, and also with respect to the alternative nicotine ordinance, otherwise known as e-cigarettes or vape. All of these sort of work together. So, Madam Chair and Board Members, as part of my presentation this night, I want to tell the board that the first public hearing we had for this ordinance, this ordinance identified two different criteria of regulated substances, and that is what is in your agenda book. You're going to find that we, we're talking about unregulated opiate substitutes and unregulated steroid substitutes. And I hope the board may remember the public hearing, and I believe the, the sheriff was here, law enforcement was here, and obviously, I think that they certainly were with us in, in wanting to do this, but they also expressed some concerns based upon just the enforceability of it, the utility of it, et cetera, all of which made very good sense to me, and I think the board as well. So, I will tell you that since that public hearing, we have worked very closely with the sheriff's office to come back and give you some options that perhaps are more enforceable, that make more sense, that candidly will actually allow there to be an enforceable tool that can be used in the community. So, unfortunately, the board, I have to advertise what we, what we had at the last meeting. So, what is in front of you is what you had the last time. I have passed out to you, however, a modification, which I hope the board will at least want to consider, that is the product of those meetings and our interaction with the law enforcement wing of, of, of the county and, and by way of the sheriff's office. So, we're no longer calling it unregulated opiates and unregulated steroid substitutes. Now, remember, we still have the unregulated marijuana substitutes that has been in the code, and that will continue to stay in the code, but rather than this notion of unregulated opiate substitutes and unregulated steroidal substitutes, what we have instead added, and hopefully you'll see this in red text, that is in one of the handouts that I handed out to you, you will see something called unregulated drug substitutes, sort of a merger of the two concepts. I'm going to read it for you very quickly. Excuse me, this means and refers to any compound or substance, whether synthetic or naturally occurring, which is significant, regardless of whether the compound is marketed for the purpose of being smoked, injected, inhaled, or ingested by humans or for human consumption that. And then we have three elements. Number one is not currently or here af, here and after regulated as a Schedule I controlled substance, because as I have mentioned to this board previously, if something is made a crime by the state, we, we really can't regulate with respect to that, because the state has already spoken, the state has already regulated in that area, and they would have been deemed to have preempted the, the field. But we're not attempting to capture those things. We're attempting to capture those substances that are missed, that are not regulated yet, either because the chemists that are producing this nefarious substances are working so diligently to poison our kids that we, our laws can't keep up with it. So, to be an unregulated drug substance, it would, first of all, not be a Schedule I controlled drug. That's already captured by law. Number two, where a reasonable person, and this is a term of art in the legal community and in the law enforcement community, a reasonable person would believe that substance is intended to circumvent the criminal penalties for Schedule I controlled substances under Georgia law. Law enforcement, I think, knows what that is. I think a reasonable person knows what that is. I certainly know what that is, and that is the hallmark of an enforceable statute. And so, I really applaud that language. It is better language than what we had before you last month. And number three, a reasonable person knows or should know that the substance is intended to cause or stimulate, excuse me, simulate a stimulant, depressant, or hallucinogenic effect that is similar to or greater than a Schedule I controlled substance. And those who are aware of these sorts of substances will actually know that many of them are more powerful than Schedule I substances are more powerful than, in some respects, natural substances. And again, we use that reasonable person standard again. If you flip to the next page, you will see that sub, paragraph B is modified to include that it is unlawful for a person to use, sell, give, manufacture with intent to sell, possess, purchase, deliver, transport, or distribute both unregulated marijuana substitutes or, the new definition, any unregulated drug substitutes. Okay, so that's the nuts and bolts of what, you've never authorized this, but that's the nuts and bolts of what the direction we were given to sort of work with law enforcement, come back and bring you something that was candidly better, and, and hopefully more effective from a regulatory standpoint, and that is the product of our action. Then in D, this is important, and this is candidly sort of the coup de grace with respect to the enforcement wing of this, and that is, any vendor that is licensed to sell alcohol in Forsyth County, Georgia, if there is any conviction resulting from the sale of either an unregulated marijuana substitute or an unregulated drug substitute, that's the new language, that irrespective of any other penalty, I glossed over those words, hereunder shall also count as a violation with respect to those progressive actions or sanctions provided by Section 611B of the Forsyth County Code, and you all know what I'm talking about. I refer to that as sort of the three-strikes language. If they violate this code, that it will count against their alcohol code. That's the, that's the takeaway. Madam Chair, Board Members, that's my presentation. What I just read to you is new. It is, I believe, better than what was provided to you a month ago, because I believe it is not an expansion of what we were doing. I would consider it to be a refinement of what we did. I don't believe we have to have another public hearing.
That would be my question.
I don't believe we need to have another public hearing. I believe it is perfectly consistent with what we did a month ago, and after the public hearing, the board can adopt, should it choose to. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing? I'm a.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone who would like to come forward to speak in favor of this, please do so at this time.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I am Kirk Winterstein. I live in Forsyth County. I speak only for myself, this is what I believe. We know we are having problems with chemicals that mimic the effects of marijuana, steroids, and opioids, and we know that legal drug use can lead to illegal drug use. In North Georgia, we have young people who use these legal products, and they may end up in the hospital or, and believe they are addicted to the product. These products are sold at many convenience food stores. These products are about two steps ahead of legislation, and they are engineered to be like that. It is just not a gutted ideal for someone to purchase this product and use it while they're driving down the roadway. We have a responsibility and right to regulate within reason to protect the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens. I speak in favor, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Winterstein. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak in favor of this?
My name is Dana Bryan. I live at 5850 Lake Oak Landing in Coming, and I've lived there for 14 years. I'm the mother of a daughter who died because of drugs at the age of 15. I'm also a former middle school teacher, so I've been passionate about adolescents and teenagers for most of my life. I am concerned about anything that provides our youth with addictive substances and substances that can affect their developing brains, therefore will affect their behavior and the choices they make at such a critical time in their life. Our county has the reputation of protecting the safety of its citizens. Please consider the damage that is done by chemicals that control the behavior and choices made by those who use, not to mention introducing the users to the lifelong challenge of addiction. As adults, it is our responsibility to do everything in our power to provide our youth and all citizens with the safest environment that is within our power.
Thank you, Mrs. Bryan. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
I live at 2285 Woodfalls Drive, and I'm not a politician, so you'll have to forgive me, I'll probably mess this up a little bit, but right now, I'm working for the county in our drug prevention efforts, and I've lived here since second grade, and my heart, it bleeds for this county. I love the people here, and I'm working really hard to fight for them every day. I'm a person in long-term recovery, and I've seen firsthand the effects that drugs have on my hometown and the people that I love and care about, including myself, and I feel now that I have my life back, it's my duty to kind of give my life back for these people and to advocate for people who don't have a voice right now. I'm a certified addiction recovery empowerment specialist, so what that means is I volunteer my time as a peer, and I work with other young people in recovery, but I also talk to their, their mothers and their fathers on a regular basis. I had one in my kitchen last night. And I'm working with high schools and law enforcement and recovery organizations in the community, and what they're going to tell you is that the people who are using these synthetic drugs are not adults, not normally. These things are, are for the kids, right? These things are what the kids are using, and it's an epidemic right now. People are vaping and smoking them, and so, when we set these laws up, we're protecting our kids. We're protecting people who might not become addicted if they didn't have access to this kind of stuff. And I'm really proud to live in this community, because other people that I, I work with, they look at Forsyth County, and they look at, we're on the forefront of this, you know? It's really incredible. People are looking at us and watching us. So, by passing this, by putting people ahead of profit, we can do something really incredible and set an example for the rest of our state. So, I'm in support of this, and thank you guys for your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Amber, you're just sitting down, right? You're, okay, just making sure. I see none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? I'm a.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote, and that public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. Discussing discussions among the Commissioners. Commissioner Mills, I know this has been a passion for you, so.
It has, and these are our Drug Council people. I was just with them Wednesday morning, and they have such a heart, and Victoria's our youngest new hire there, and she's such a bright light, and it's, it makes me cry. I'm so proud of them and proud of the work that they do, and it is a labor of love. And they, it's, we had a huge crowd at our meeting on Wednesday, and it's, it's so good to live in a community where people care and that we have a board that's supportive of it, and, I mean, we've had meetings where, I mean, people in recovery stand up, and Eric Gray did not long ago, and he leads a group out of Mountain Lake Church, and he said, you drive in other counties, and their stores have all this crap out on the counter, and they're, and, and we've taken such proaction that we're trying and we're fighting hard to not be that county and to not have that, and not that we don't still have issues, but we're trying hard to, to stand for, we don't want our kids to have it, and, you know, to fight for our children, and it's a united effort. It's the sheriff's office, it's, I mean, it's our DA, she was at our meeting on Wednesday, it's, you know, Drug Court was there, and it just takes all of us working together, and it's a, it's a joint effort, and that's how we're, we're making some headway. We still have people dying, but it takes all of us working together, and Victoria's leading a group called Revive, and it's people in recovery community learning how to speak out, and they're, they're taking speaking engagements all over, and they're working hard to make a difference, and they are making a difference.
You did a great job.
Well, they are, and I'm, I'm proud of them. So, anyway, I think this is a, a, a big step in the right direction. We're, we're making a big statement. You want to, you know, you want to sell this stuff, you're going to be held accountable. And hopefully, they won't want to sell. If they get a mark or two against that alcohol license, they'll say, you know, it's not worth the profit that we can make. the profit that we can make. Anybody got any questions? If not, well, I'll make a motion to, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 118 as presented by council.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote, and that motion does pass five to zero.
And Board Members, just for the record, that will be the version that was handed out this evening that I went over as discussed. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I want to thank Tammy. Is this, is this what Tammy presented, or is it the next one?
It's, no, it's a combination of all those things. Everybody, that, the Sheriff's Office, some of these stakeholders.
And Tammy Nicholson with the Drug Council came and gave us a lot of input. She's not here tonight because she's at CATCA, I think in DC or somewhere. She's at the conference, so she helped a lot.
Okey dokey. Well, on to public hearing number 12. Ken, again.
Madam Chairman, Board Members, this is the second part of the three-pronged ordinances. This is a proposed modification to the Forsyth County Alcohol Code. Once again, as with the previous ordinance, what is in your agenda book is not what I want you to consider. What I want you to consider is what I handed out to you because it captures the language of drug substitutes as opposed to synthetic opiates and synthetic steroids. Otherwise, this is the moving part of our alcohol code that links up to the ordinance that you all just adopted that says, if you get three strikes, to include modifications of the unregulated drug substitute ordinance. It will count as part of your progressive sanctioning under our alcohol code. So Madam Chair, it is mechanically speaking, it's what you looked at a month ago, but the verbiage has been changed to reflect the unregulated drug substitute ordinance we just talked about, and then it also discusses the vape, any cigarette products that we haven't quite got to. That's the next agenda item. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote, and that public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone here to speak in favor of this ordinance, please come forward at this time.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I am Kirk Winterstein. I live in Forsyth County. I speak in favor. I stand on my prior comments, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Winterstein. If there's anyone else who is here to speak in favor of this application, or excuse me, of this ordinance, please come forward at this time. If there's anyone who is here to speak in opposition to this ordinance, please come forward. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote, and that public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. Again, if there's any discussion amongst the Commissioners, would anyone like to offer a motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 127 with the version in our hands as presented by council.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote, and that motion does pass five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners. Number, public hearing number 13, Ken.
Madam Chair, Board Members, this is the last of the three ordinances we talked about. This is a proposed modification to the, what I consider it to be, the Alternative Nicotine Product Ordinance. You may refer to it or think of it as e-cigarettes and vape. So there's actually not as much going on here as the red in your version that I've handed out to you would suggest, but I do want to go through it very briefly. As with the other two, what I have handed out to you is in fact the modifications that I would ask the Board of Commissioners to consider. This is the ordinance that the county has adopted and had in place for some time that had a fairly rudimentary permitting scheme with respect to vendors whose primary business is alternative nicotine products, mainly e-cigarettes and vape products like vape juice. So when this came to you before, a month ago.
We trimmed it down.
It was more robust than it is now because what it was going to require was a very robust permitting system, not only for vendors whose primary products were alternative nicotine products, but also anybody who sold it at all.
Way too deep.
And after, again, the same sort of stakeholder meetings that I've already talked to you that occurred in the last month with all of the various individuals that are so intimately involved in this, the decision was made that those secondary dealers, in other words, whose, it's not their primary business to sell these products, that setting up a permitting process for them was phenomenally more regulation than was needed to combat the problem.
Yeah.
And so again, you've not told me to do this, but I do think that the individuals involved, the board members involved, I think they have the board's best interests at heart, and so I have put together modifications that candidly remove those secondary vendors from this ordinance. So I hope the board will consider that this evening. Most of it is similar, so this is only going to apply to those entities whose primary business is the sale of these products, and that would mean entities that have at least 50% of their business model is the selling of e-cigarettes, et cetera, vape products. That's who this would apply to. The permitting system is much more akin to what we're used to in the alcohol code, so Miss Comrath, I'm sure will be very comfortable with that system. That's what we already sort of use, and it is more regimented. We're stripping away secondary vendors. The permitting fee, which will become effective next year, is higher. It's $1,000 per year. It's been 50. So that is a difference, but otherwise, and of course, it does, this also gets linked to the alcohol code. I will tell you the likelihood that a vendor that sells primarily e-cigarettes and vape, also having an alcohol license, is probably de minimis, if nonexistent, but it's still in there. Otherwise, Madam Chair, the biggest change tonight is taking away the secondary dealers, that's my presentation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of this change, please come forward.
Madam Chair, I am Kirk Winterstein. I live in Forsyth County. I speak in favor, I speak in favor based on my prior statements, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Winterstein. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote, and we have the public hearing closed with a vote of five to zero. Commissioners, would you like discussion or like to offer a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 68 as presented by council with the version that was.
127, is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, is it?
127.
127, as presented by council with the version that was presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
One second before everybody leaves, I want to thank Molly for all of her work, and I want Mitch to stand up because to all of y'all that voted to put the counselor at Gateway, Mitch is the guy we hired.
Oh, awesome.
So if y'all will, that's Mitch, so.
I don't order.
Y'all might want to get a chance to meet him.
Thank you. That vote does pass with another five to zero vote. Moving on to hour 14, I believe.
Why don't you, is that all on the ordinance changes that you worked with in the Sheriff?
That is with respect to the S.
There's another ordinance change.
We need to thank Sheriff Freeman, who's actually showed up to make sure all these things pass correctly, and his deputies that'll be enforcing this as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, guys.
Deputy Frampton.
Hopefully, we've given you the tools. Public hearing number 14. Is that Tom, or is that Ken? That is also Ken.
Madam Chair, one moment, please, just one, if I could, just one second.
Yes.
He's finishing up the city, Milton. Just kidding. He handles so many jurisdictions, it's crazy. I don't know how he keeps up, but I couldn't do it.
I don't know how he does it.
I'm just looking at what I have in front of me. I was writing him down on the agenda because I saw, I would see like something that said 50, I think it's 50, and I could go.
Here to. I know. I know.
Madam Chair, I'm going to ask, just that we do sort of a cleanup motion just to make sure that our numbering's correct. Do you mind if I tell you what I would respectfully request we do?
Please do.
All right, so, and just bear with me, Board Members, thank you for this, just to make sure that we get this done correctly and it is reflected correctly in the minutes. So with respect to public hearing number 11, with respect to public hearing number 11, that is ordinance number 118.
That's what I have on my agenda.
That is ordinance number 118. Public hearing number 12 was ordinance number 68, and public hearing number 13 was ordinance number 127.
I have that on my agenda as what I recorded. Is that reflected in the record?
And they weren't written on our agenda.
I took them from the handouts and wrote them on my agenda. Do we have them?
For what? The motion was actually for.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm asking. Were they called out properly in the motions?
The Madam Clerk is showing something different.
Is there one that requires?
Right, right. I'm going to request a motion along the following lines. So I would request, Madam Chair, that a motion be made for purposes of clarifying the record that for public hearing 11, the board was adopting ordinance 118 as distributed. For public hearing number 12, the board was adopting ordinance 68 as distributed, and for public hearing number 13, the Board of Commissioners was adopting ordinance 127 as handed out.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that.
We have a clarifying additional motion.
It would be helpful if in the future, they're written on the agenda. Because when you give them out at the last minute and they're not mixed up and aligned in our book, it does get confusing.
I will take full responsibility for that.
Is it batteries in your bowtie week tonight?
Listen, there's just been a lot going on, and this is unusual, that three have to work together this way.
Yes.
And there's been so much activity on them this month, but nonetheless, I will do a better job of trying to let you all be organized at the night.
We're not picking at you, sir. You do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Way to catch it.
Are we ready to go on to 14 now?
We are. Madam Chair, item number 14 is a third-party inspection ordinance amendment, and I would like, if the board will allow it, Ms. S. Wine to approach the podium and make the presentation to the board.
Please, and just, we are also not acting on this tonight, correct? It's our first.
That's right. This is the first public hearing, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. So this, y'all discussed this.
I need to make her announce her name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Molly S. Wine. Thank you. So y'all discussed this at a work session a while back. We've been in the works with planning, trying to make sure that we come to a good resolution to clarify the requirements of the ordinance and also to come up with some equitable solutions for when there are violations related to third-party inspections. So your agenda packet should have a very, should be a fairly messy red line. A lot of that is just housekeeping, clarification of what defined terms are, things like that. So it may look like it's a little bit more revised than it actually is, but when you get into the more substantive changes, we're looking at incorporating a policy document. Of course, the county is still going to accept any third-party inspections in accordance with law. They may allow them for others, and so we're allowing the planning department to have an updated policy on what they're going to accept, maybe above and beyond what the state law mandates. But one of the largest changes, and I think the real impetus for the change, had to do with the suspension and revocation of the ability of a technician or third-party inspector to submit third-party inspections to the county. So we have the third-party inspection list. You have to be an approved third-party inspector. Sometimes you're a business that has several technicians that are conducting those inspections as a practical matter. Sometimes you might be a one-man show who's doing those inspections themselves, and what we've run into is wanting to make sure that we're holding whoever's actually completing the inspections accountable for their actions while also holding the designated and approved third-party inspector who has those technicians working on their behalf also being held accountable, say, if they had several technicians who are going out completing inspections and missing things, or having instances of noncompliance where they don't note some issues with a building, any, whatever noncompliance it may be. So we've started to revise the penalty section related to the review and possible revocation or suspension of someone as an approved third-party inspector, and by that, we have separated technicians with the, from just the third-party inspectors themselves. So if there are instances of noncompliance, which we've defined a little bit more, so there are several different types of issues that a third-party inspector might have, you know, providing a falsified report, not including the proper certification, things like that, but you also could have where, if they're completing an inspection and they miss something, you know, we looked at life safety codes, you know, things like that to come up with what we thought was important and what might actually be an egregious offense. And so there are progressive violations now provided for both the technicians and the approved third-party inspectors, so that if, say, an employee of a company has completed several inspections and missed the same thing multiple times, have been corrected by the county on it, gotten warning letters, told to correct it, and still continue to have instances of not identifying correct issues, things like that, then you have the ability to have progressive actions against that individual as well as whatever supervising company it may be. So you'll see those two things, and that's the main crux of what we've got going on here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who would like to come to speak in favor of this ordinance change? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote, and the public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. Ken, we'll be bringing this back for another public hearing next month?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. So we'll see it again on March the 7th?
Yes, ma'am.
One question to Tom. Tom, did they get it where though the, where we had that issue that came up, that the person that owned the company was being punished the most? I know Molly addressed it, but that, the company's not getting shut down because of the employees right off the bat or whatever.
That's correct.
So we got that right, though?
That is, that is in the proposed change.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other, is there any other discussion before we move on? No? At this time, Karen, we'll read the rules of the meeting and announce the public comment speakers, if there are any.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We're now at the second public comment portion of tonight's meeting. No forms have been submitted. If anyone wishes to address the board during public comments, please come forward at this time. I see none.
Thank you, Karen. Moving on to our old business, we've already taken care of old business number one, which takes us to new business number one, and that's Ken again.
Madam Chair, Board Members, this is hopefully a very quick item. This is a letter that we received from the law firm that has been representing the county in a class action with respect to some of these online hotel companies. It was whether or not these, not online hotel companies, but they're the web portals that will sign up, like Orbitz, et cetera, that will sign up. You can make reservations, whether or not they were paying the appropriate amount of hotel motel excise tax. Many different jurisdictions signed up with this firm, and so they've been negotiating and have gotten a settlement or have been receiving these fees over time. We're not receiving, candidly, Board Members, a great deal of money. I believe Mr. Gruen could confirm that about once every quarter, we might get a check for just a couple of thousand dollars, if that. If that, right. That's generous. So the only thing before you this evening is, is they want to know, the law firm has asked for us to elect whether we want to commence receiving our own collections or whether we want the attorney firm and their accountants to continue to receive the collections. The firm in the letter, and it's in your book, is, has stated that because they're sort of on autopilot now, they are reducing their collection fee from 33 1/3 down to 12%. The only good part about having them collect it is that they are running it through their auditors who are trying to compare it against what they believe the fees should be. If we do it ourselves, we won't have that level of review. So if you, basically, if you say, elect to allow the firm to continue to collect it for us, then there'll be a 12% reduction, however, with some accounting oversight. If we If we say, forget about it, we're going to do it ourselves, then I'll have to coordinate with them, and the check would come directly to us, and there'd be no amounts reduced.
I'm doing it.
Is there any additional funding they've been able to collect to us that we were not already collecting automatically coming in?
Well, I mean, through their efforts, we're collecting it at all, is the point. But I think that ship has sailed now. They know they have to pay us, so, you know, I don't think, I think it's candidly six and a half, one a dozen, in the other anyway, just because 12%, it's such a low number. If this was Fulton County or the City of Atlanta, we'd be having a very different discussion right now. But I just, I could recommend them continuing to collect it. If the Board wants to go it alone, I'm comfortable with that as well.
I mean, what's, Dave, what will be the administrative cost of us having somebody to perform that work?
We'd have to have them set it up.
I mean, I think we'd have to, the 12% reducing it from thirty-three to 12%.
Commissioners, we're talking 12%. For three months, we received $1,500. So.
12% is not much.
To pay 12% to collect the, to receive net 1,500, now it'll go up, I think, because the 1,500 reflected the higher administrative fee. So I think it's worth letting them do that for us.
Yeah.
And as Ken said, if you look at other counties, you're talking tens of thousands
of dollars over three months. For us, it was a net of 1,500. So I agree with Ken, it's well worth it.
Make a motion, let them still collect.
Cindy had already made a motion.
Oh, you already did? I'm so sorry, Cindy, second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That motion does pass, five to zero, to allow them to continue collecting at the reduced rate.
Yep.
Thank you. New business number two, Dave Grueen, Garen Coleman. I guess Garen is.
And I'll be, it's delegated up to me.
Is Garen still here?
He'll be left.
So Commissioners, this is a timely issue because the work is underway on the gateway at State Road 369. And so we've basically pushed back to GDOT as long as possible, but the idea here is that to make the bridge at 369 a gateway, there's two things that we've asked them to price for us. One is the ashlar stamping, which comes to $354,000. It's 900 feet of wall that ranges up to 35 feet in height. I have detail, if you want that $354,000 broke down, broken down. The second component is simply the difference on the chain link fence that GDOT has their contractor installing to upgrade it from galvanized chain link to black vinyl coated fence, and that comes at the net difference between those two products of $11,702. So Dave can talk about where we're funding it, but we really need direction and approval tonight in order to have it done by GDOT's contractor.
Let's talk about funding.
Okay. Well, we've put a budget resolution in your package to, if the Board wants to approve authorization for payment of this, you need to approve the resolution as well. What we've identified since this is a little bit of an unusual item in that it's not a normal capital item where it would end up being our asset on our books, this is something where it's a GDOT project, and we're asking them to do something for us. So what we did was, we went to our insurance premium trust fund, otherwise known as our engineering fund, and that revenue source, well, we do have enough in a strong fund balance to say, let's go ahead, that's our normal roads and bridges engineering funds, let's go ahead and use part of the fund balance from that to make this transfer to GDOT, and that's the way we've structured the budget resolution in your package.
Thank you. Board members, is there any discussion on this item? Would anyone like to offer a motion?
I move that we approve the budget resolution and the consideration of the additional funding for enhancements for State Road 369 as briefed and included in the budget resolution.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. That should be sufficient in that motion, correct? Am I missing anything?
That means we're authorized to go ahead and make the payment with that funding.
An authorized payment.
Right.
Please vote. And that motion does pass, five to zero. Thank you, people.
Thank you for your work.
All right. Yes, thank you, everyone. I know the answer to this, Ken.
There is.
Counselor, is there a need for executive session?
Madam Chair, there is, thank you.
And for anyone who is waiting for the outcome, we will have an item on the agenda for action after we have a hopefully brief executive session. Is there a motion to recess the regular meeting and public hearings to enter into executive session for discussion of litigation, land acquisition, and/or personnel?
So moved.
Second. The motion, a second, please vote. That motion passes five to zero. It is 7:54, and.
We'll be back in three hours.
All right, we are, is there a motion to, oh, we are, we already did that. We're already back in. We have one open session item left on the agenda tonight, Ken.
You call us back in order?
Oh, I thought, well, I made a motion. Is there a motion to reconvene the regular meeting and public hearings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, please vote. I was thinking we did that on the way out, on the way here. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll go ahead and take that next, or the final open session agenda item. Board members, this is a memorandum of agreement and compromise between Forsyth County, Georgia, and Georgia Stone Products LLC. I have placed the version that I want the Boards to consider this evening in front of your station. This is the product of, candidly, a legal dispute between Forsyth County and Georgia Stone Products LLC. Representatives of Georgia Stone Products are here in the gallery with us. This is a matter where the county has had concerns with respect to Georgia Stone Products' nonconforming status and entitlement with respect to the property that is displayed on the screen, and Georgia Stone Products has indicated their willingness to vindicate their rights as they see them to their legal nonconforming status in a court of law. And you may recall, while we attempted to see if we could work out a solution with Georgia Stone Products, the county actually entered into a tolling agreement with Georgia Stone Products that would give us an opportunity to negotiate with them while neither party lost any of their rights or legal defenses due to simply the lapses of time, which the Board approved and which Georgia Stone Products approved. Well, I think we think we have something, and I have discussed this with the Board in executive session under the notion that it would be potential litigation, both theirs and ours potentially. And we have worked up a compromise agreement. And the compromise agreement actually implicates not only the piece of ground that you see on the screen in front of you, highlighted in blue, but also the piece of ground to the north of that parcel, which in the memorandum of agreement is actually called the Mashburn tract. And that is a fairly large tract of land, 233.70 acres, that is zoned rez six for just about 1,000 residential units or 1,000 apartments. However, Georgia Stone Products has indicated that with respect to some of that, what we're calling the Mashburn tract, they have identified mineable aggregates or mineable products on that property, and therefore, they have placed that piece of property, all of it, not just the portion where there may be aggregate or mineable substances, they have placed it under contract. And I'm going to want to hear from Georgia Stone's attorney on that in just a moment with respect to the contract and the status of the contract, but they've placed that piece of property under contract. So based upon the legal dispute between the parties, I think I've mentioned to some of you, I feel like we might have been able to make lemonade out of lemons in this. The county has an interest in an industrial node in this area. The county has an expressed land use interest in an industrial node in this area. Georgia Stone has an interest in getting back to work with respect to their sand mine operation and being able to invest fully in that operation, but also may have an interest in mining that portion of aggregate on the Mashburn tract and then otherwise converting the balance of it, a balance of it, to an industrial use, which is consistent with your thought of making that an industrial node. So if we can achieve a confluence of those two interests, at the same time taking away the residential component of the Mashburn tract, which I know the district commissioner has an interest in, then we may have just pulled off a fairly compelling hat trick. And that's the product of this proposed settlement agreement. The moving parts of the settlement agreement, I go through some of the history in the memorandum. I've gone over that history with you. I think the Board knows it. If you have any questions, you can ask me about it. But the moving parts are this. If you approve this memorandum of agreement this evening, number one, you are agreeing that Georgia Stone retains its legal nonconforming right to commence sand mining operations, and that will be an irrevocable finding by the Board of Commissioners. They will then rely upon it. They will then presumably spend money on it, so that will be done. All right? In addition to that, and from our perspective, we want to hear, and they have affirmed, that they have that property under contract, the Mashburn tract, not a portion of it, all of it. And it is under contract, and in fact, there is a sizable earnest money down payment on that piece of property. The expectation is, is that all the due diligence is done. Georgia Stone has done due diligence. They've looked at surveys, they've looked at title, they've looked at those sort of elements of due process that we do on our acquisitions, and in fact, they've waived all of the contingencies under the agreement except for the zoning contingency, because for this to work, Georgia Stone needs that property to be zoned to a particular use. We can't agree to guarantee that. We can't do it. What we can agree is to consider it in good faith, and that's what we would be agreeing to do under this agreement. We would in fact agree to consider in good faith a portion of the property to be zoned to a mine zoning, and that is the portion of the property that is below the ridgeline. And I think the Board knows what I'm talking about. In fact, if you look at the agreement, there is a concept plan attached to it that outlines the line where the M-I-N-E, the mine zone, can go. The balance of the Mashburn tract may, and I say may because I'm not saying shall, because we retain our legislative discretion, may be zoned to a mix of either M1 or M2 or a combination of those. That is to be worked out in good faith between the county and Georgia Stone and those stakeholders who have an interest and want a voice in perhaps what happens to them. But that's not been done yet. All that really is anticipated from the county is that we will initiate a zoning to accomplish these objectives, and that is the mine below the ridgeline and some mix of M1 or M2 or both above. All right? With respect to the additional moving portions of the agreement itself, it is anticipated that if we can come up with a land use designation for the Mashburn tract that we are comfortable with, that at the time the Board gets ready to take final action on this, we will in fact solicit actively, overtly solicit input from Georgia Stone to make sure that they're comfortable with the zoning, the configuration, the conditions, and the concept plan, and also from a representative of the Mashburn tract to also indicate that they are comfortable. And if they are comfortable, then we'll go forward with the zoning. We'll await to see if there's any challenge. If they're not, then they'll close on the property. If there is a challenge, we'll have to let the litigation process take its course, and assuming that the county and Georgia Stone prevail with respect to any challenge, then of course, the closing will likewise occur. If an objection is tendered by either Georgia Stone or the Mashburn representatives, then we have to see if we can work it out, and we'll have about 60 days to try and work it out. If we can't within that 60 days barring an amendment of the contract, then the zoning will be withdrawn. Board members, it's important, if there's one takeaway from all this, to understand it's this. If the zoning either doesn't conclude by December of 2020, December 31st of 2020, or if we otherwise exercise our legislative discretion to take no zoning action at all, or to zone it to a piece, to a zoning that Georgia Stone or the Mashburns can't get comfortable with, that's fine. We'll retain that discretion, but Georgia Stone will not have to close. And I want the Board of Commissioners to understand that. Otherwise, the expectation of both parties is that any objection that Georgia Stone folks or the Mashburn tract folks may make is in good faith, and it's also anticipated that we will view and consider and act upon the zoning, possible zoning, in good faith as well. Madam Chair, that's my presentation. I went over also in executive session. I think the Board is certainly aware of the moving parts of this agreement. The thing I would ask for is perhaps, Madam Chair, if you could have a representative of Georgia Stone to come down. I would like it expressed, assuming of course it's accurate, that the contract, that the property is under contract, and candidly, that there has been an amendment on the contract that embraces basically the moving parts of the latest memorandum you have in front of you, because it's important that their contract with the Mashburns and this memorandum need to fit together.
Right.
So I would ask that of you, Madam Chair.
Right, thank you. And so if I, you know, if you want to come forward and attest basically on the record for us that the property is under contract, that you are, that we are enjoying, enjoying these two agreements as part of that, and also to state affirmatively that the only remaining out, if you will, on this contract from a standpoint of you guys closing is indeed the zoning, that all other due diligence items have been completed, that that is the only remaining item that you have.
That's correct, Madam Chair. Again, Ethan Underwood, on behalf of Georgia Stone. And we did affirm that in the settlement agreement. So the property's under contract. The sole contingency on that contract is the zoning that's being proposed, and we understand that the Board of Commissioners has full discretion as to whether to approve or to not approve of that.
Okay. All right, what is, Sandy, you have a question?
I do. I'm just looking at the site plan that's on here that was done by Engineering 303, and I note that they've got a comment on here that it has not been surveyed by Engineering 303.
Engineering 303 has performed a survey. We had an ALTO survey that's been shot, but when that site plan was drafted, it had not been surveyed at that time. So that, it's a conceptual site plan, but as far as the due diligence is done, that's been completed, and Georgia Stone is willing to move forward.
Okay, so a survey has been done.
Correct.
But it, but when this, when this site plan was done, I just note.
That's correct.
It just confused me.
Did that survey, did the survey results in any way alter what would be brought forward as a potential site plan?
We don't anticipate it, and if it does, we've waived that contingency.
Okay.
And Board members, I want to intervene here. The primary purpose of this concept plan is to show the demarcation of where a possible mine zoning could attach versus.
That was my next question, though, because this site plan doesn't show the topo, and what we've represented too in our meeting with the Hampton folks was that we were staying below that ridgeline. You know, I know Bart represented that to them when we met, which we're going on the 13th to meet with them again. I'm assuming that this line is well below the ridgeline as well. We're going to keep representing that fact to them. Okay. I just, you know, it's hard to tell by this site plan that that's.
And I would ask, Mr. Underwood, I know just because Mr. Boyd is not at the microphone, could you just, if you don't mind, would repeat his affirmation that yes, the ridgeline for the, the demarcation for the mine is below the ridgeline?
That's correct. I believe it's 100 feet.
If you don't mind, Mr. Boyd, I think the more the merrier. Madam Chair, is that okay?
Yes, it is. Please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bart Boyd. That is correct. I believe what we agreed on is that the actual line followed the ridgeline and that there was a 100-foot buffer, which is required by the county, that brings the line where there would be any activity 100 feet down from the top of the ridgeline.
That'll be good, because that way they see trees and it won't get up to where they won't see trees. And the only other question, I noticed that on this site plan, it does show Smith Road extension, but we are no, we're not doing, I just want to say for the record, you know, we're not entering into any type of agreement about Smith Road extension or doing anything about that, even though it does show it detailed on this plan.
The agreement Commissioner Mills in S., so if you have that in front of you, but it basically says this, that Georgia Stone further agrees to consider providing certain grading and site preparation work for a proposed roadway that will connect Smith Drive and Leland Drive, and will work with the county in good faith to provide site development services if financially and reasonably practicable.
Oh, good.
That's correct.
Okay, good. I knew last time we talked that was, y'all, that's good.
Well, our hope this is a win for.
Both.
For Stone, for the Mashburn family, for the county, and for the public. So we think this is a good project. We appreciate you working with us.
Well, good. That was. Well, good. That was a bonus. Y'all, y'all said that, then you were sort of wavering. Glad to see you came back a little bit on that. So good.
Thank you.
Board members, are there any further questions? What's the pleasure of the Board?
I will make a motion. It's been a long time coming. I appreciate everybody's effort and the help from the Board. This is step one, but we've had like a million steps to get up to this point. I'll make a motion that we approve this memorandum of agreement and compromise between Forsyth County, Georgia and Georgia Stone Products as presented with the agreement before us. Is that enough?
Second.
Mr. Mills, that is enough.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion does pass five to zero. Thank you, everyone.
And we will see you Wednesday.
Is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and public hearings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes five to zero. We are adjourned at 8:54 PM.
Are y'all gonna be working tomorrow?